I'm embarrassed, self-conscious.
A call or meeting to order? The first order of business is the approval of minutes from July 25th and July 26th. Excuse me, both of which were emailed to us all. So I will entertain a motion to waive the reading and approve the minutes if there are no additions or corrections.
I will make that motion to waive the reading and approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Excuse me.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the July 26th minutes and approve those minutes as well.
Thank you. Second?
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And the meeting minutes of the 26th of July are also approved. Okay, the first order of business this evening is case 2023-20 at 91 and 95 Crest Avenue at L. The petitioner is Penrose LLC. Penrose is represented here, I see.
I'd like to state for the record that I'm going to be recusing myself because I made my opinions about this case known at the ZDIA hearing.
Thank you. The floor is yours, ma'am.
I can start. Good evening, my name is Carmen Chung. I'm a senior developer at Penrose and I'm kind of the project manager point person from Penrose's side. And very excited to be here tonight, moving this project forward, being in front of the zoning board two weeks ago and being in front of the planning board tonight of the big milestone for this project that started with a request for proposals that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts issued and Penrose was ultimately successful in competing for with what we have proposed here in response to the Commonwealth's call to develop affordable mixed-income housing for veterans on the Veterans Home campus. And since the RFP and our selection, we've been working closely with the DCAM as well as the Executive Office of Veteran Services, as well as the Veterans Home staff to further develop this project. And this will be a 99-year ground lease with the Commonwealth. And in kind of life of that partnership, I'd like to invite Robert up to kind of say a few words before I kind of go into the presentation.
Hi, good evening and thank you for welcoming us to the meeting tonight. My name is Robert Engel. I am the Executive Director of Homes and Housing for the Executive Office of Veteran Services, as well as at this time, the Acting Superintendent for Chelsea. And I come to you in that capacity. So it's a pleasure for me to come and speak tonight and share my thoughts of support for this very important project. We do believe that it will be both transformational for our campus and supportive of our current resident veterans, as well as future generations of veterans who will be even more comfortable in their own affordable housing units. Since the project's initiation, it has prioritized financial sustainability for the redevelopment of these beautiful but old and tired buildings that need an awful lot of very expensive help. The power plant, the infrastructure, all needs help. It all needs to be basically replaced and that's what will be happening in those spaces while we maintain the aesthetic, which is absolutely beautiful at the top of the hill. So we're very pleased that that's being done in a economically viable way for the Commonwealth as we move forward with this very exciting and important private-public partnership. The Commonwealth does remain committed to serving our veterans at Chelsea and across the entire Commonwealth. The new community living center that just opened this last week in this project are two leading developments on the campus that we are using to better meet the needs of our veterans both today and in the future for the foreseeable future. Through a combination of rehabilitation and new construction, this project needs will meet all of our, all of the needs of our veterans who are privileged to call it home. Current residents at the Veterans Home will continue to receive services from the Commonwealth until such time as they transition into the new affordable units managed by Penrose. They will receive support from dedicated property management staff, a resident service coordinator, all through Penrose and perhaps most importantly, they'll continue to, they will start to receive services by Soul Drawn. All of our veterans who live on campus today will have place on campus throughout this entire project and certainly in the new space as it's developed. I'll share as a note that a program presentation similar to what you're receiving tonight was heard by the Board of Trustees at the Chelsea home earlier today and received tremendous support from them as well. Soul Drawn is a nationally recognized nonprofit organization. I've had the privilege of looking and seeing and visiting their spaces out in Western Mass and their veteran population is very similar to our veteran population and their needs are met quite well. They will be onsite, offer comprehensive range of services for our veterans, they collaborate closely with our Department of Veteran Services, the Executive Office of Veteran Services, and other agencies to provide veterans with shelter and support, fostering an environment of dignity, integrity, and hope. Their mission very closely aligns with that of our Executive Office of Veteran Services and of the Chelsea home itself, where we provide the highest quality of personalized healthcare and services with dignity, honor, and respect. EOVS and staff at Chelsea will continue to work closely. I myself, as part of my job, will be providing a degree of oversight with annual review of the work that they do on an ongoing basis as we make sure that the services that are being provided do in fact meet the needs of our entire veteran population. And through that, we will work with Penrose and Soul Drawn to ensure that the needs are met of that veteran population. The other thing that's very important to know is, as you would expect from my background and where I work and for whom I work, that this is a veterans program. And we will always make sure that our veterans are well cared for there, that veterans are on the waiting list for there, and whenever they somehow aren't on the list, they get back on the list. Meaning that for whatever reason, over time, five years from now, what have you, we make the call to all of our local VSOs. We say, hey, there's an opening, there's a space, get, get your people. And as soon as a person gets on that list, they will become number one on the list. That's the way it works. So we're pleased to have Penrose and Soul Drawn as our partner and DCAM as the program overseeing. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. I also want to acknowledge that from DCAM, we also have Paul Crowley and Abigail Vladick in the room and they can also help answer any questions during the, after the presentation. So tonight with me, I have Charlie Adams, who is our Regional Rights President in the New England office. From our architecture team, we have Philippe Saad and Greg Alcarzweany. We have our civil engineer tonight, William Maher, as well as JP Charbonneau from Crowley Cottrell. Soul Drawn is actually on a plane to DC right now, getting an award for one of their projects in New Jersey. So they're not here tonight, but I congratulate them for getting an award tomorrow in DC. And one thing I would like to note is that in addition to being a developer and owner of affordable mixed-income housing across the nation, which we've done for over 50 years, we also have an affiliated property management company. So we're investing in being the property manager of this in the long run. So we will have a presence onsite with full-time property manage staff, management staff and maintenance staff in addition to services provided by Soul Drawn. We've also done a number of veterans developments across the nation. Here are just a few of them. And Soul Drawn actually provides services for some of our projects in New Jersey currently. So it's an existing partnership that has worked out really well thus far and from our partnership on this thus far, where we've met with residents and starting to get to know residents with Soul Drawn, we think that we will be, have the expertise necessary to make sure that transition for the veterans on campus will be as smooth as it can be. So this is a slide that we show the residents every time we go to a town hall meeting, which is approximately every quarter. We're providing them updates to make sure that they're aware of any upcoming changes, what the schedule is, any impacts on them, and provide a venue for questions. And we tell them every time that our promise is committing that their, all residents will have a place at Veterans Home, whether it be during the redevelopment or after the redevelopment, and that their home will not be jeopardized. So these are kind of our, all of our priorities for the site. It's creating 100% veterans preference, service provision, ensuring that they can stay on site throughout redevelopment, renovating the existing domiciliary-style buildings into apartments with individual kitchens and bathrooms. It's creating a little bit more of a diverse unit mix to create an opportunity for veteran families to also have an opportunity to live here, as well as creating a one-stop-shop resource center and other amenities for veterans and their families on campus. So veterans preference, what does that mean? It means that all existing residents will be first in line to get new units. It means that all times during the initial lease-up, as well as when we're fully occupied, any veteran that applies will skip ahead of any non-veterans in the waiting list. And this applies to all of the units. And in addition to that, as Robert just mentioned, we're going to be working with the Veterans Home, the Executive Office of Veteran Services, Soul Drawn, and VSOs to ensure that this waiting list is populated with veterans at all times. And it's not going to, we're not going to be waiting until there's only one veteran left on the list to do this outreach. It's a, we have to continually be vigilant about this outreach to ensure that we have veterans on the waiting list and occupy this with veterans, which is the purpose and intent of all parties involved. So as I mentioned, we were in front of the zoning board two weeks ago and we're in front of the planning board today, seeking major site plan approval. So as a baseline, just to clarify as to what parcels are involved in this redevelopment, it's the parcel at the corner of Waran Ave and Summit that's currently used as parking. It's the domiciliary buildings north and south of Crest Avenue, as well as Kevil, which is on Hillside. This is the aerial of what the site looks like currently and this is the aerial of what is, we envision it to be after the redevelopment is complete. So no buildings are being demolished, with the exception of a one-story incinerator building between Sergeants and Laundry. And in its place will be a small cafe and plaza area that really is meant to be an amenity for residents to create more lively pedestrian activity and street activity. And the only other demolition will be the kind of overhead walkway that is metal that connects Kevil and Headquarters. So it goes over Hillside. So all the buildings will be rehabilitated according to Mass Historic Commission and National Park Service standards. So they'll very strictly dictate what we can or can't do to these buildings and even what we can do to interiors, what kind of windows we can replace these with. They have kind of a lot of requirements. From a campus perspective, Philippe will probably talk a little bit more about the architecture, but I just wanted to point out, kind of, our goal here is to create a campus with amenities that is welcoming, that's active, that's connected with its neighbors. And pointing out the cafe that I just talked about earlier, behind it, our goal is to turn the power plant into a veterans museum and art center. The current Commandant's House will have property management staff on the first floor with units above and adjacent to it will be a Victory Garden, which will have a small greenhouse component because we recognize and we've heard that there are a lot of veterans on campus that have a green thumb and this is something that they're very excited for because they did have a greenhouse previously and would like that amenity for the future. The Veteran Resource Center will take the place of where currently is Headquarters, the first floor. We're continuing to program this with feedback from residents. We did have small group meetings over the course of the summer in May, June, and July. And we've met with 78 or 80 of the 120 residents that are on campus and Soul Drawn continues to go on campus to meet more residents, develop relationships. So that work will be ongoing. And there's, I guess, a new types of green spaces that we're going to be creating that our landscape architect will talk about later on. But I just wanted to say also that there have been some changes over the last month or two as we heard neighbors and a butter concerns related to Crest Avenue, related to Hillside and its impact on parking and traffic. So I want to point out, first thing is that Crest Avenue, we were able to, I think, reach middle ground and keep Crest Avenue two-way when we originally proposed it to be one-way. And Hillside will now have parking on both sides because we heard that there are a lot of concerns about that. So JP will kind of go a little bit more into what our plan is for those streets, but we think we've reached a compromise where we improve the safety while acknowledging and mitigating impacts on the butters. So this was preliminary floor plan for what we thought the Veteran Resource Center, currently the Headquarters, could look like. And this will continue to evolve. Just last week, I was at a town hall meeting and a resident asked me what's going to happen with the library. And currently, we don't have a library in here, but that will be incorporated now as we hear of amenities that residents want to see here. But this is planned for phase four, so we still have time to continue to evolve and develop this. So this is the proposed phasing plan where the priority was how do we reduce the amount of impact in phase one, because that will be the ones that, no matter how well we plan this, there will be, I guess, unforeseen conditions. So our goal was to limit the number of residents that will be impacted, so we prioritize the currently vacant buildings. So Sergeants and Laundry don't have any residents in them and Commandants doesn't have any residents in them. So those three buildings, along with Williams, will be the first phase. The second phase will be John Adams, which is across on the south side of Crest Avenue and East Parcel. Phase three will be Sullivan, the townhouses, and the proposed changes to Crest Avenue. And then phase four will be the Veterans Museum Art Center, which is the power plant, the Headquarters, and Kevil. And the reason for that, phase four is kind of awkwardly positioned between phase two and phase three is we recognize that that's where a lot of existing services are being provided, so we wanted to preserve that for the last phase. And also, the power plant needs to be online until we have all the residents that are connected to it moved off of the Commonwealth building, so that is pushed to phase four So the proposed unit count is 241 units, of which a vast majority are studios and one-bedrooms because we're taking into account the current resident population at the Veterans Home and making sure that all of them will have appropriately sized units for them. So that's about 85, 83% of units are studios and one-bedrooms. And we've created a number of two- and three-bedrooms with the main goal of kind of creating opportunities for veterans, families to have an opportunity to live here. And phase one and phase two is kind of where a lot of the units are built and that will help us manage the existing veteran population and have those off, completed earlier so that there is a completed unit for residents to move into as soon as possible. So in terms of parking, the overall parking ratio is .882 with 197 spaces, of which 119 are off-street. And we've proposed a parking district and have worked with the city to start progressing those, having conversations about, with the city about what process we need to implement. And the goal is to be at the, present to the traffic, Parking Traffic Commission agenda in December. So this includes the parking spots on Crest Avenue and part of Hillside that's closest to Kevil. And the, I guess, the rationale for this is that the existing veterans that do live on campus right now do have the right to, do park in front of their buildings and we want to preserve that right for the veterans, especially for veterans that may have disability. And if they live in Kevil, it's kind of farther for them to get to the off-street parking that's behind Laundry and Williams. So this is the overall kind of parking in the area that will see some amount of change. So you can see on Hillside that there's parking on both sides of the street now and there's also additionally new parking spots on Waran that currently don't exist because there's no curb at the lot where all the town, the townhouses are proposed in the upper left-hand corner of the site. So in terms of parking that will be impacted from what is there right now, the only parking spots outside of the parking district that will be impacted are two on Hillside that are right where we're trying to, that's very tight because the John Adams Building is basically at, if not a little over, the property line. So that, that's why in creating a small sidewalk there, we'll be impacting two parking spots on Hillside there. And these are the parking spots that will be added as in, as part of this overall site So with that, I'll hand it over to Philippe.
Good evening, everyone. So my name is Philippe Saad. I'm the architect with the Melashaffer for the redevelopment of the Veterans Home in Chelsea. And I'll walk you through the architectural design. This is a site plan and I think a lot of the materials that you will be seeing today is a little bit of a reaction and actually supplemental information that was requested last two weeks ago when we sat down in front of the zoning board. And I think there was a request by the community and the zoning board to understand better where people would access the buildings and when, where service will be also coming in and out of the building in terms of if somebody's moving in or if trash is being picked up. So the red arrows really show you where the main entrances would be on Crest Avenue and along Summit Ave. We have a set of street entrances for the different townhouses laid out along Summit Ave. Then we have an entrance for Sergeant as a standalone building. We have a combined entrance at the new connector that connects Laundry, the connector and Williams. This, this set of buildings, those three buildings will act as one building. And the reason we're doing this is to resolve a lot of the accessibility issues that these historic buildings have. All these buildings have steps to get up to the front doors, the majority of them, and they do not have, the majority of them also do not have elevators. So we carefully located small additions as well as accessible entrances to allow visitors and residents to be able to go in and out of the building, no matter how they, they, what, their mobility is. Commandant's House is also, has a separate entrance. The complex that is composed of the East Parcel and the John Adams, again, will have a new entrance here incorporated in the new building, which is the East Parcel. And then the Sullivan Building and the Veterans Resource Center will have a combined entrance through the Veterans Resource Center. Kevil, which is across the street and of Hillside, again, will have its own separate entrance. The blue arrows, to respond to some of the zoning board's requests, the blue arrows are the areas where service will be coming to pick up trash from the back of the building. So the connector, for example, the connector will have a trash chute. So there's a trash truck that will, will drive in the back of this parking lot and park here and pick up the trash when, when the contract's happening. Same thing with the Sergeant Building, there will be a place for, it has its own, its separate service access. On the south side of the campus, because of the biography and because of how the buildings are connected, we have located one central location for trash to come out of the building. So it will happen in the rear of the Headquarters Building, exactly in a very similar location at where it's happening currently. And for Kevil, it will happen on the side of the building, exact, at the corner. If people who are familiar with Kevil, Kevil is built on a hill, so half of the building is above grade, half of the building is down the hill. So it's very tricky to locate entrances and also service areas for that building. So this is an overall view of the campus when it'll be fully built after all phases. I wanted to point out the, the new construction, the set of townhouses in this corner of the site. There is a rebuilding of a build, of a portion of Sergeant that is needed to be rebuilt for egress and this will house the new very small cafe run by veterans. The Connector Building is this volume right here between Williams and Laundry and the East Parcel, which occupies the corner of Hillside and Crest Avenue. Again, last, last two weeks ago, there was a request also to just have an understanding of general floor plans, of where things are in, on campus. So our team has taken section throughout different levels. And the sec, the, the hilltop section here at the bottom really tells you how the, how the section is being taken. So right now, we are cutting through the third floor of Kevil, the basement of Sullivan, and then at the power plant section. So you will see, this is where you will notice, anything that is colored is occupiable space. So we have few units in Kevil and also few units in the East Parcel Building as we go through this overall section of the lowest level of, of the site. And as we go up, the, the floor plans become more populated with units. And we have color-coded those units. All the blues are one-bedrooms, the slightly darker, I'm sorry, all the, let's go from the lightest to the darker, so we're not confusing people. The lightest colors is the studios and in this plan, they are located on that side of the Adams Building, maybe one in the East Parcel Building. Then the one-bedroom are the mid-tone blues and the darker blues are the two-bedrooms. The red ones are supportive living units that DCAM has requested and is needed for, for the veterans who have, who need extra supportive services. So they will be living on the second floor of the Headquarters, directly adjacent to the majority of the amenities on site. And as we go up higher level, again, the blues signifies all the residential units, the green is the amenities on the first floor of the Headquarters Buildings. And that's one of the highest sections through the site and you can see that the upper floor of all buildings will become all residential units. So looking at the additions and how they fit into the context, we have worked on this proposal very closely with National Park Services and Mass Historic, which both of them are funders of the project through local, state, and federal tax credits. And through a really a balance of where intervention could happen onsite without compromising the historic nature of the hilltop and the buildings, we were directed to, to locate the East Parcel Building right at the end of the campus, in line with the Adams Building, so the height of it would not surpass the height of the Adams Building. We've also been given the green light to add the Connector Building between the Laundry and the Williams. The request was also that the Connector Building would not surpass the height of the Williams Building. So it'll be a four-story building with the top floor not higher, lower than the roof of the Williams Building. And this is the small reconstruction that needs to happen that will house the, the small cafe operated and managed by a small group of veterans. Then the, we, these are some images of how, this is the Connector Building that will be inserted between the Laundry Building and the Williams Building. We have studied the rhythm and the proportions of both buildings, being the Laundry and the Williams. and have created this rhythm that reflected in the new Connector Building. This will be the entrance for all three buildings. As I said previously, it'll be an accessible entrance. There will be a mailroom and a double set of elevators that will allow residents to go up to all floors to serve all three buildings. The setback also is in line with the roof line of, of Williams. So that as you step away from the street, the building appears shorter and sets back as a nod to the historic character of the nearby buildings. A guideline from Mass Historic and National Park Services is to have new buildings not compete with the historic building and not to mimic the historic building. That's why this building looks this way. And it will be clad in, in cementitious panels that are repetitive, just like the historic buildings are repetitive, but in a distinctive material. And this is again, an image of the Connector Building that will be between Williams on the right-hand side and Laundry on the left-hand side. And you can see the, the, the front roof line or the datum that's been maintained from the Laundry Building to the new building and to the Adams, and, and to the Williams Building. Now on to the East Parcel, which is the other new construction on site. And as I said, this is a building that is at the intersection or the wedge end of where Crest Avenue and Hillside meet. Currently, it's an empty lot, it's an open space that many use, utilize. So the East Parcel Building will be set back in, it will be the closest fifteen feet from the edge of the sidewalk on, on Hillside side and the furthest away, thirty-three feet from the edge of the sidewalk. And along Crest Avenue, it will align with John Adams Building. And then will step away from the street to really release the corner as urbanistically, as an important corner where the building would sit. If we are to look at the elevations, and that's what we presented to the zoning board previously, is that the height of these two buildings would align. So the new building would not surpass the height of the current Adams Building. And then as the slope steps down, the building also will step down. So it'll be, it will be in majority a four-story building. This is a half-story because of grade. Those who see, know the site, it's a very steep site. We cannot dig into this portion of the site. We understand there's a lot of ledge. So our building has really to, to live with the topography and, and work with, with the land, which is the better approach usually. A rendering perspective of that same building, sitting next to the Adams Building. Here, because it's in line with a lot of brick volumes, a portion of the Adams Building will be clad in masonry. And then the rest will be in horizontal fiber cement building, fiber cement siding, again, stepping down as the, the topography steps down. Around the building, we, we left a lot of space to create planted buffers. And I think JP will talk about that planted buffer between the building and the new sidewalk that we are putting on that side of Hillside Ave. Again, another perspective from that same corner, this is from Hillside looking up towards the Adams Building here and the new East Parcel Building. I want to make everybody note that this is what Carmen previously had brought up, that the Adams Building really steps over the property line and is really almost on the street. Our building is more than thirty feet away from the property line purposefully. That's another rendering from Warren and Summit, looking at the townhouses, which will be three-story residential buildings in line with one another. And then some of the renderings that I think the, the committee is aware, these are our renderings that we've shown since day one, about the feel of the street as the full development will, will happen. And that's the Café Building here in white, rendered in this location, next to, next to Sergeant, in front of Sullivan Headquarters, really creating a place that brings people together, community members and veterans. And hopefully, that café will be run by a veteran business. There was also a request from last week to have a sense of how are the units inside this development? So we took a few of the studios, the one bedrooms and the two bedrooms. The one on the left-hand side is the, is the studios inserted in the existing buildings. And the one on the right-hand side is the studios in the Connector Building. All of them will have, of course, a full kitchen and a full bathroom.
I need to interrupt.
I'm sorry.
If there's anybody blocking the fire lane, you better go move your car because it will be towed. Sorry.
No worries. The next is in, it's a view of the kitchen, of the one-bedroom apartments. A living space, a bedroom space, closet, full bathroom, and a full kitchen. And then a, a, a diagrammatic floor, floor plan of the two-bedroom units in the historic buildings with, again, a full kitchen, full bathroom, and two bedrooms for families. We wanted to put in, in image of a current completed project that is affordable of the same type that our team has done with Penrose in Auburn, Massachusetts. And this is based on the state guidelines and regulations. And on the left-hand side is the fully accessible kitchen, the large windows, which we will, we will include, especially in the new building, and the quality of the finishes and the space so that everyone understands how this aging campus could really be restored and renovated to provide housing for the veterans. I think that's the end. I'll turn it to JP.
Good evening. My name is JP Sharpano. I'm with Carl DeCotro, the landscape architects on this project. I'll start with these sets of images. And these are historic etchings and photographs from the mid eighteen hundreds to early and mid nineteen hundreds of the Veterans Home Campus at that time. I'm starting here because at that time, Chelsea was a much different place. And the goal of this project is not necessarily to go back in time and recreate this, but the goal is to find inspiration and find ways of creating outdoor spaces that are comfortable and inviting. And all the while, trying to balance sometimes competing spatial demands between people, cars, both moving and parked, and trees. Those are all the kind of factors that we're dealing with and we're trying to strike the right balance between. The overall site plan, which was briefly discussed, and I'll just highlight certain areas that are part of the outdoor improvements. Starting with the upper-left area for the townhouses, this is more family kind of style dwelling. Will they have their own off-street parking and on-street parking, a small patio spaces for those residents? And then Crest Ave, we're suggesting or proposing significant improvements to Crest Ave to transform it to feel more pedestrian-friendly and add more trees to it. And adding trees, but also creating flush crossings to span north and south. These aren't so much like speed bumps, but I would consider them more as like generous, large plazas that extend or expand north to south. And then over by the Commandant's House, the Victory Gardens mentioned, this is a more quieter, private space for veterans and for the neighborhood, really, to do, engage with plants and other kind of small-scale outdoor activities. Other improvements to the building south of Crest Ave include more courtyard spaces, improving the courtyard that is there now, that is really not really well-used at, at all, but clearing that out and making a space, a more generous space for those residents of the John Adams Building. And over by Sullivan, this is the area probably with the greatest outdoor transformation. And this is the one area, the one building in this campus that is set back significantly from Hillside Ave. And that creates an opportunity for spaces, both for residents in terms of having a courtyard, an improved courtyard for them, but also an area for the neighborhood and for families to gather. This being in the form of a playground, a small playground that can create a connection, better connection with its neighbors and with families. This is the existing condition of the campus and primarily focusing on the, the trees that are there. At one point, probably there were more trees on, on this campus. And over time, it probably got depleted and never replenished. And so it feels very much like missing teeth, if I could use analogy. And our goal is to substantially add more trees to this, to this campus. And we think this does a number of things. One, it makes the outdoor spaces more inviting, but also more comfortable in terms of shade. But it also creates seasonal interest and more variety to the outdoor spaces where there isn't one now. In terms of the types of species that we're proposing, it's predominantly a native palette. There are some that are not native, but these are native-adapted, not invasive. And this is a mix of both deciduous evergreen and understory trees. So really creating a variety of planting species on the site where really, right now, it feels kind of one, one-dimensional or one-note. In terms of the outdoor spaces that are existing in the campus, there is a variety of outdoor spaces, but mostly they just feel more open rather than active. Yes, the, the area mentioned where the new East Parcel will going is probably the largest open space in this campus. However, it is sloping. And we are proposing, well, with the new building, that condition will change, obviously. But we're to, to, let's say, counteract that loss. We're trying to create additional spaces in a variety of different scales for outdoor gatherings. As part of this project, we will also be adding site lighting. There is site lighting there now, but we are suggesting to improve it and improve the quality of it. Most of the outdoor site lighting is very utilitarian feeling. This would be using a pole light that is part of the Chelsea standard, it's more historic character. And these are the, the locations that we're proposing to add on-site. And if we just take a step back, this is part of the, the factors that we're trying to balance. This is a circulation diagram, both pedestrian and vehicular of, of the campus as it is now. It very much feels like a street, an active street. There's parking on both sides, both on Crest Ave and on Hillside. And it really feels like, this part of the campus feels like an island, a traffic island. There is no pedestrian circulation on the south side of the buildings, on the north side of Hillside Ave. So using a variety of techniques, we're trying to add a sidewalk on Hillside Ave so that neighbors and veterans can freely walk on one side without having to cross Hillside Ave. But these areas where, that are highlighted in blue on Crest Ave, we're suggesting these are that generous flush crossings to calm the traffic as people navigate or drive down Crest Ave. But also adding bump outs, and we'll get into this later when we get into the sections, but bump outs for trees. So it's basically, essentially taking a, a spot of parking for a tree. And this is what I'm, I'm trying, suggesting by trying to balance all the different competing factors. And that is one way we can do this. Also adding pedestrian connections along both sides of Summit Ave where there, it currently stops now. So creating a freer circulation for pedestrians and prioritizing the pedestrian is the overwhelming goal of this project. And we'll go into a series of images now of getting into the street and how it is now and how, in the proposed condition, it will be improved. This is Crest Ave currently. We have Sergeants to our right and Sullivan to our left. This is that one-story addition that was being proposed to be removed for that café. Currently, this feels like a street, parking on both sides, two-way traffic. There's a lot of on-street parking on Crest Ave. And there's also, and this is the dimensions of Crest Ave, including the two lanes of travel. So it very much feels like a street with very little street trees. And this might have been, there might have been more at one time, but it's been depleted. In July, we suggested an idea, we proposed an idea where we were looking at a way to maximize trees and what that would look like. This is really adding, taking it, taking the trees and prioritizing that most of all. And this is that original plan. This would have taken away a lane of traffic, but still have those, have those flush crossings that we still have. But from this, we got feedback that Crest Ave is actually an important street. And to cut off one travel lane would have been disruptive to the neighborhood and also to this campus. So we brought back a lane of travel. So it's two-way traffic as it is now, with parking on both sides still. But creating, these are the bump outs mentioned earlier, where the, creating space for trees. Overall, as mentioned earlier, this means a net reduction of parking along Crest Ave. But we think that the additional benefits that the trees provide, that, we think this is a positive change. And again, dimensionally, the, the dimensions of this, of the new improved street below, two-lane traffic bump outs, which is roughly a, the space for a car. And just to take you through the, the series of studies that we had done, both existing, the earlier proposal and the current proposal for Crest Ave, looking at the quantities of trees, we, we went from sixty to thirty-one, but we gained a lane of travel. So this is part of the, the balance that we're trying to strike with all these competing factors. Sometimes they can overlap, but sometimes they conflict. And we hope that this new proposal strikes the right balance. We're going to go through a series of other sections and streets. This is again, further down Crest Ave, headquarters building on the left, the Laundry Building on the right. In this particular instance, Laundry is very tight, very close to the street. The existing condition above, where Laundry is shown very close to the street, we're not proposing to change this condition, this is an existing building. But providing greater space for the trees by using the bump outs, which is shown in the background of the proposed condition below. Very similar to the previous section shown earlier. This is that bump out. We think that this, these bump outs kind of interrupt the, the parallel parked cars. So that breaks up that feeling of, that feeling where the, the parked cars kind of relentless along the street. We think this adds a little more variety and a little more interest to the street. And these are the flush crossings mentioned where the existing condition, curbed street, in the flushed crossing, this is a generous plaza-like condition that spans across Crest Ave, a flush crossing for pedestrians, but also a moment for the car to slow down. Going down Hillside Ave, this is the condition where the neighbors on Hillside Ave are on the left. The East Parcel, the existing East Parcel Building, or the existing East Parcel area to the right. The existing Hillside Ave has two lanes of traffic and parked cars on both sides. No sidewalk on, on the north side of Hillside. No sidewalk on the north side of Hillside Ave. And you have the parked car right up against the wall. By adding a sidewalk, we would also like to propose reducing, removing the chain link fence, reducing the height of the wall to have more of a, so that the building doesn't feel like it's turning its back to its neighbors, but it feels like it is more open to its neighbors on that side. And in this side, there will be planting not trees, but a more open feeling than is there now. You're not, the neighbors aren't facing the wall, they're facing the new building, but also a buffer between the street and the building. Further down Hillside Ave, this is Keville on the left and Sullivan on the right, the courtyard on the right. Again, this is a condition where actually Hillside expands. There, it expands to have two lanes of travel and parking on both sides. But the dimensions, the overall dimensions are a lot wider than they are on the other side of Hillside Ave. This is where we're proposing that there is space to create a playground or a space for children and families to gather near this area, but also adding a sidewalk on this side of Hillside Ave. And then the courtyard above and off the page below on the bottom section. Yes, and with that, that concludes my portion. We'll hand it over to the civil engineer.
Good evening. For the record, my name is William Marr. I am a civil engineer with Niche Engineering, and we are the civil engineer for the project. So what I quickly really want to discuss is some of the strategies that we have for not only stormwater erosion control and utility connections for buildings is what we plan to do for the site. And we propose to incorporate some bio-retention infiltration systems to offset, or mitigate the amount of runoff from the site there. We intend to use catch basins that are deep sump hooded to provide some water treatments. And in the water treatment train system, provide some water quality units to further enhance the quality of water from our site, be it in the parking lots, on the streets, and so forth. So that water discharging from this campus will have a much higher quality standard for what we are used to. And because we are on a hill, we're faced with a few challenges because of the sloping in some of the work areas where some of the development is proposed. We will have some erosion controls for not only the existing structures on the site, catch basins and so forth, but also because of the slopes, we will have to provide some additional erosion control measures such as wattles, hay bales, straw bales, I should say, some silt fencing and so forth. And probably in some of those steeper slopes, we'll have to double up on some of that to maintain or keep any erosion that might occur on our site and not have any impact on any of the budding properties downhill of the site. We're proposing to provide street trees, as JP mentioned, on the campus. And based on an earlier discussion, I believe a couple of months ago and so forth, and I think some of the members of the planning board were present, one of the ideas that was brought up was about the tree box filter system and so forth. So we intend to look at that and include that in our design for the street trees and on the site there to provide another location for water to be channeled, feed a device such as a tree to reduce on-scape watering. And then these are just some typical erosion controls that we use on the site. Jute netting to help with the steep slopes and so forth, to allow the establishment of some grass to stabilize that area for any future rainfalls. Some water quality swales. As I mentioned before, the double roll of erosion control devices for those steep slopes. Catch basin, silt sacks to prevent any sediment and so forth, coming from any of the disturbed sites into an existing storm drain system or into our proposed storm drain system. And one other thing, if I could just say that, you know, any, one thing that I really didn't touch on is probably something that you really don't see is a lot of the utilities, the water and sewer. We intend to be connected to sewer systems currently owned by the city of Chelsea. And as far as water, right now, we have our own water system supply, so to speak, which is fed from a pump system located behind the existing Chapel Building. Our future goal is to work with the city and DCAM to come up with a plan so that each of the buildings is on its own water system. And what I mean its own water system is for domestic water, for drinking purposes, toilet flushing, things of that nature, but also for fire protection services because much of the, much or all of these buildings will require fire protection services to protect the residents, staff members, and so forth. Thank you.
All right, home stretch, last slide. So this is the schedule. Just want to say that over the last six to eight months, we've been meeting with the Board of Trustees, going to Veterans Town, Veterans Homes Town Hall. We had a neighborhood meeting at the Merritt Club, we were meeting with staff. And all of that has culminated to kind of what we've submitted to zoning board for approval, the zoning and planning board for approval. And this is a key threshold in order for us to apply to the state for financing. And this means that we're applying to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities that administers the low-income housing tax credit in the state of Massachusetts. All of the units here proposed will be de-restricted affordable housing, which is why we are going to be applying to the state for subsidies. That typically is how housing across the nation of this type is funded and built. Our goal is to start construction by the end of next year. And we've committed to doing a pre-construction meeting with the neighborhood so that the neighborhood is aware when things are going to start happening. And when they see a construction truck drive past their front yard, they know that it's going to happen as opposed to being surprised. And our goal is to complete the four phases as quickly as possible so that we can, so we don't drag this out as a construction site. So with that, we'll open up for questions. Thank you for your time.
My question, I guess, is, I understand what you said about the Massachusetts Historical Commission, and there was another board.
The National Park Service.
Okay, that, I think you said, instructed that the new buildings not mimic the historic buildings. My question is, with the renditions that were shown in the slides, they look very brutalist to me. I don't know what anybody else thinks, but I just, they seemed to be, I mean, definitely, they definitely contrast. But again, I think it's too harsh a look. And I think you said that they're using cement siding. Why was that chosen? Is it because, will it last longer? Because again, I just wish that it, that they could just not be so harsh.
Yeah, I'm trying to bring up the slide.
Oh, the cable, it looks like the cable was disconnected.
So I appreciate the reaction, thank you. Just to answer the easier part, cement siding is an extremely standard material for any multifamily housing. It is more durable, it comes factory finish. And it's not a material that you don't see around. It's extremely common and it's extremely cost-effective. In this particular, this is a cement siding called semperate. It's slightly a little bit more nuanced than the hardy siding that everybody is familiar with. But it's of a similar durability. We have to design buildings that last several years, they're funded by the state, and there needs to be managed.
Not several years, for decades, decades.
Decades, decades, thank you, several meaning, decades. Can you, what, can you tell me what do you mean by brutalist? Because that's the part of the question that I didn't answer.
Is it the color? I think, you know, it's the color. I'm looking at the upper portion, which just, I mean, I'm just seeing concrete slabs.
There's no concrete at all, there's no concrete at all on the outside of the building, and I can understand how the gray could look like concrete. The vertical part of the building will be the same material put in vertically. So it's cement siding, it's not concrete. I think we should make a differentiation here. And the horizontal one, it is a cement siding that is intended to look like wood. And you can start seeing, as we zoom in, you have this variety in the texture and in the color of the horizontal panels or siding that we start seeing. In between the windows, it could be metal panels, it could be boards, panel boards. But it's absolutely not the concrete material that I think in places like Boston City Hall or other places are built in.
Yeah, it just, I just, I do not find this to be aesthetically pleasing. You know, and part of the goal is to make this a place where the veterans want to be.
A second, I personally would like to see it be brick and have a material that really unifies the campus. I have been involved with many historic projects, and I know the National Park Service takes a stance on making any new additions very deliberately.
That's right.
Separate. But, you know, I think it should be reconsidered, the material that you're proposing. We see that everywhere, there's so many multi-unit buildings going up. I don't want to look at any more hardy plank than I've already seen personally. But just to clarify, you said, when you were thinking brutalist, you were thinking like a concrete finish, right? So this is a.
It's not, it's not concrete.
It's basically like fake clapboards.
Yes, fake clapboard is the easy way to talk about it, yes.
Cementitious, black material.
Yeah, understanding that architectural preference is pretty subjective. At the end of the day, I think it is a great blender of older structures that are in place and structures that are being added. So overall, I'd say I'm a fan. But that's just one architectural preference.
Thank you. I am suggesting to the board that they include, if they, if you approve, that you include a condition of design review.
Now, I remember also when we met with you in July, when you did the informational presentation for us, it was brought up in reference to the playground.
To what?
To the playground, the location of the playground wasn't, it didn't seem to be appropriate for the families that could be moving into the townhouses, that it's out of remove and it is right on top of the street. And we had asked, my memory is that at that time, we had asked if citing it elsewhere could be considered. So I'm curious as to why you have chosen to keep it where it is and not show us some alternative.
I didn't highlight this, probably it's my mistake, but the idea is that for the families in the townhouses, there would be a smaller totlot. It's not designed, but the idea is that we would provide a space for those children closer to the townhouses there. It's a smaller scale type of totlot instead of a playground.
Will there be, okay, so where you have it cited on Hillside Avenue, it is, I mean, it is right on top of the street. Will there be some protective barrier between that playground, the sidewalk and the street?
Yes, it is very close to the sidewalk, and there is some topography that we'll have to negotiate. That is a level of design that we haven't got into yet. And when that part, that phase is being more carefully designed, we will definitely add it so that there is more protection for those children.
Yeah, in all of our developments where we have playgrounds that are meant for small children, there is a kind of, it's like a, kind of those typical black fences that are, I think, I don't know what the, huh? No, no, we never do chain link. Don't say that to me. Like those black typical fences that are around playground areas that are meant for small children.
Okay, thank you. And I have, you are, you want to create a new parking district specific to the residents of, at the Soldier's Home. If I remember correctly, it will not comply with the required number of parking spaces that the city has in its ordinances, that there will be fewer parking spaces in this district. Then, what is the ratio now?
The ratio required is one and a half per unit for every unit up to two bedrooms, and then a half a space for every bedroom over two units in each bedroom.
And I think, you know, you had said it would be, what was it, .8 spaces per, you know, for each of the units overall. That means they'd need a parking variance for this district. Is that correct?
Kind of refresh my memory, you have the right to build 308 units up there, and you have parking, sorry, grandfathered for that amount of spaces. You're only building 241, so it's determined that they do not need relief from the parking.
Okay, okay, thank you, never mind then.
Anybody else?
Oh yeah, I got a couple of questions. I got a couple of questions. Okay, you are literally building one three-bedroom unit in this whole complex? One three-bedroom unit in Phase Four? And a family, you want families to live in the townhouses? That's one of my concerns. Also, how are you going to plow Crescent Avenue with the tree bumps when it snows? Because it's, it can, plows can be quite aggressive and not familiar with how to plow. And also with the upgrades that you guys are talking about. There are a lot of ifs in the drainage systems. I hear a lot of ifs, I don't hear a very solid plan about that. I don't hear a very solid plan about lighting. You have trash pickups, one trash pickup. The, you have trash pickups, one trash pickup for a building in the back that I can't even figure out how a trash truck gets in. I, I think there's a lot of, um, I personally did not think it looked like a brutalist building, but that's besides the point, but, uh, uh, so I think there's an unrealistic timetable for this project as well. There, we haven't, I, I haven't heard anything about budgets. Um, I haven't heard, uh, and, you know, you know, you get passed, then, then we get finances and it's, you know, this is a big project, and I understa- I appreciate the fact that you guys stressed that this was gonna go to veterans, because I know that was a big issue before. And, but, um, the open spaces, I think, are interesting, but we live in New England, there, they, I think we could use better use for some of the spaces. It's like, we, we wanna build a coffee shop, we want it to, you know, there's a, there's a lot of ifs in this project. And I get very nervous about approving projects with a lot of ifs. But this, but this, this, uh, there's no bike paths, there's no, uh, part, there's no, uh, charging stations listed anywhere in this, you know, electric cars are gonna be coming in, there's no- nothing about charging. There's nothing about solar panels, there's nothing about anything being green, even in the new buildings, which you can certainly make green. There's, uh, no, there's, uh, you, there's no reason for anyone else in the city to participate in this. There's no public spaces for cities of Chelsea's. Everything is designed for the campus, which I appreciate and understand, but, you know, it would be nice to be able to, uh, bring up other things. I'm also concerned about shadowing. If you put trees in there, what'll happen to the bill, to tenants in the building with their, with their, blocking their light? Some, you know, sunlight. I think parking is fine, I'm not too concerned about parking, but I very rarely am. And, um, lowering the retaining wall is an interesting idea, but we didn't see any design of what the retaining wall could look like on Hillside. You know, again, all I keep hearing about is we're gonna redesign it later, we're gonna redesign it later, and I don't, there's, you know, there's no reason why a new building can't be a green building. There's just, in my mind, there's no reason.
All right, so should we, how do you want us to go through each of these items? I mean, a lot of the stuff is details that we will, I mean, we can easily add all of these things, we can talk, we can, why don't we start with the sustainability? Why don't we start with the green stuff?
I'll be quick, both buildings, both the new buildings and, I'm sorry. Both of the new buildings that are gonna be built, the East Parcel Building and the Connector Building will be passive house designed, which is, if, I'm not sure if you're familiar with it, but it's the, a very high level of airtightness in the building to lower energy cost. We are also stripping, uh, the, where we can, the inside of all the historic buildings, and putting insulation as much as the Historic Commission and National Park Services allows us to beef up those walls and put back new drywall and new trim, and replacing all the windows so that all these buildings are extremely airtight. In terms of solar, we have done few adaptive reuse with Penrose. The difficulty with solar on an existing building is that sometimes the structure of that building will not support the uplift of the solar panels.
Yes, but what about the new buildings? I understand, I understand, it's very nice putting in new drywall and new windows, that's great, I get it. I understand you have restrictions for hall, for new buildings, but I, I, you know, I'm talking about the new construction.
Yeah, uh, we are working on several projects, and I think we will, not I think, we will put in solar panels, uh, on the roof where possible in the new buildings. We haven't, um, shown it on the renderings, uh, but we need to make a balance between the condensers of the mechanical units and the solar panels on the roof, and this is where we will work with our team to balance. But this building will be passive house, uh, designed and certified for the new Massachusetts Energy Code. Yeah, and, and the new energy code will require a certain amount of, I can't remember how many, but there are dictated number of, uh, charging stations that we will provide, we have to provide.
In regards to the question about lighting, we consulted with a, the lighting rep for the products and developed a photo met, um, photometric plan, which dick, which guided the locations and quantities of lighting currently proposed. And, and there is an official photometric plan submitted, um, for the record. But this is a diagram of those locations proposed, and the fixture selections, which are in keeping with the Chelsea city standard.
Um, and in terms of the bedroom mix, uh, I think that was really a response to kind of ensuring that we can meet the demands and the demographics of the existing veteran population. So that's the balance that we're trying to meet. Uh, I think that there is some concerns that it will be harder to attract, uh, veteran families to this campus. And the goal and intent of this project is to be a veterans' project. Uh, so the premier, the, a, a large number of the two-bedroom units are in the townhouse parcels, because, uh, in talking to our, uh, cons- market, marketing consultant, they advised that that would be a more appropriate context for veteran families and be a more attractive option for them.
You said something about the shade from the trees, I wasn't, what was that in regard to?
If you build a lot of trees, and they grow, it's gonna throw shade in, in the units, in the, in the, in the buildings. So Crest Ave with the bumpouts, with the plowing, and, you know, it's, it's, it's a very, it's a, I think, a very romantic idea to think people are gonna drive down, and then it's just gonna park, and no one's gonna hit the tree, and nobody's gonna attack the tree, or, you know, it's like, cars can do a lot of damage to trees, and so having this, having a bumpout, so either it's gonna be an ironwork thing around the tree, or it's going to be some kind of cement, otherwise the tree's just gonna get plowed over.
So you, so, okay, so you'd like us to take the trees and the bumpouts out?
Yeah, I, I don't see any design work, all I hear is about the, about the bumpouts with the trees, but I didn't see any design on how you planned to do the bumpout on the, on the trees. And so, on Crest Ave, so I just felt like it, it's, you know, it's a very, I, you know, everybody loves trees, who doesn't, and we need trees to help with the, with the green, but it, it doesn't
So you're, you're looking for more detail than this? Is that like, I was trying to get a sense of what you're looking for.
I, I just don't, I, you know, I just can't figure out how the, how the, you know.
I think the con- the concern is, um, are you gonna be doing your own plowing to make sure that the trees in those bumpouts are not damaged? Um, because, I, I mean, the city plows, they just go through. They don't, you know, they really don't care what is there, if there's snow covering, you know, in the street, they're gonna go through it.
So I feel like if the tree wasn't there, it would be a car there, and usually if there are par- it's like a parked car, like the plow isn't gonna go in and out, it's gonna go straight through, and, uh, there will be cars parked between the bumpouts. And if the tree wasn't there, there'd be a car parked there. So I think usually on a city street, uh, the plow doesn't go in between parked cars. So this would be a similar condition where the plow goes through the street, and where there are bumpouts or a parked car, it's, the tree's kind of taking the place of where a parked car would be.
Well, if there's a snow emergency and they decl- and they have to, if they have to, if it's a snow emergency and that street is declared a snow emergency, and they can't park there during a snow emergency, then it's, then the, the plow, parking spaces aren't gonna be plowed, because, or they're gonna be plowed under. I mean, you know, there, we were, we have been very fortunate in, depending on your perspective, I don't particularly like snowstorms, but, um, you know, we get a blizzard, that street's gonna be a nightmare. You know, it's gonna be a nightmare to plow, it's gonna be a nightmare to, to maintain. And I, so I think you're gonna lose, you know, a lot of parking there, and, and but besides that, I, I think it's gonna narrow the street again, so you're gonna go, gonna have a, a much narrower street. And I think the trees, the way it is designed at the moment, I can't understand how the, how the, uh, trees act as a guide for parking.
So, so the street, the street, oh, sorry.
Isn't that applicable to every street in a city that has parking, i- isn't?
No, because it's, because you don't have three parking spaces, a tree, three parking spaces, a tree.
As they were saying, it's like, three parking spaces, a car, three parking spaces, a car. It's gonna create the same exact issue.
No, because you have a permanent, you have a permanent item. It's not like it's a clear, it's, it's very rare to put, uh, uh, parking, it's very, very rare to put a tree every four spaces or whatever it is on, on a street. I don't see how it's gonna work on this street. I like the, I love the idea of the tree, I just don't think, I don't see how putting a tree in a parking, where a parking car would be, would not be detrimental during winter. I just, I can't, I just don't see how it's gonna be able to function. It's not like you have a tree going down the center, it's not like Commonwealth Avenue, it's not like in Cambridge where they, they put curves in so you can't park at the corner. You are literally putting trees in a parking spot. And I don't see how it's gonna get plowed, I don't see how it's gonna be maintained. I, it's gonna look pretty for a few, few years, and then I think it's gonna look like a nightmare.
So I don't think the trees or the bumpouts are gonna impact plowing at all. But it is impacting parking spots, and parking spots are something that the community could care about. So I am interested in, uh, getting some input from the community on impact of trees and parking spots.
Am I right that this street would be part of the parking district?
That's right.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, do, do you know, is Crest Ave an emergency route? So that if, um, you know, that there's, uh, if the city declares a snow emergency, there would be no parking on the, on the street? Which means, I mean, that is, that is the situation where a plow could theoretically potentially just plow right over those bumpouts. I mean, it, it's just, it is something to keep, to, to consider. You know, I, I, the area does need more trees, absolutely, but, um, I mean, where we see them elsewhere in the city, or where, you know, things are starting to be planted is where they have the bumpouts on the corners of the streets. They're not coming out in the middle of the street.
Can you, um, provide a little more detail on the parking program? I, I understand it's gonna be its own district. Does that mean that there's a sticker that's valid for just that district? And that those cars will not also have a general Chelsea sticker? I mean, how, how does that work?
John, can you speak to that?
Uh, yes, it would be set up such that in those areas that were identified on the parking plan, only the veterans would be allowed to park there, but they would not be allowed to park anywhere else in the neighborhood. That way it guarantees, it, it provides parking for the residents of the Soldier's Home, but does not interfere with the residents, uh, of the neighborhood parking in there.
Okay, I understand.
So technically, you would be, the board would be recommending approval of the concept for the parking, but the applicant will have to go to the Traffic Commission to get approval for that district.
Yeah, we should also think about the guest passes and how that portion of the program would work. You know, if they're excluded from the whole program, or if there's certain privileges.
Um, and in response to your question about the emergency route, uh, my team says that they did check, and it's not part of the emergency route.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, what are some of the, your other comments, you wanted trash, you had a question about trash? It's not just one location, do you wanna talk about trash?
Yeah, just as a general concept, each building will have a trash chute, cause we're not gonna make a tenant from all the way in Adams, walk all the way to headquarters and then throw their trash away. There will be, uh, I guess, trash chutes, uh, at appropriate distances with compactor rooms. And our maintenance staff will then consolidate it, uh, into the larger, uh, trash area where it can be put into larger bins for pickup.
Bike paths?
Oh. Any more? Bike paths was the other question, was the other thing, do you wanna talk about bike paths? Okay, um, we were, we were trying to finish, address your questions still, you didn't, no? Did you, you want us to finish?
I mean, I have a question, I guess, obviously there's a need for more green. Um, I guess, are there any options to add more green without the bumpouts? I know it's a very tight street, the sidewalks are tight, I know you guys are trying to do your best, but I wanted to figure out if there's any other options.
Uh, space is very, like you said, space is very limited. Uh, to add, uh, the trees to the street without the bumpouts was along the lines of the similar, of the previous proposal, where there were no bumpouts, the trees took up more space and removed a lane of travel. And based on our feedback, last time, we thought the two lanes were more important than the, the quantities of trees that we proposed the last time. And in terms of, just to go back to the bumpouts, the bumpouts create space for the trees, but it is, uh, the curb, the raised curb goes around these bumpouts to protect the trees. That's not to say if, if a plow driver is not paying attention, they could, sure, they could, that could happen, but that could happen anywhere, really, in any street tree condition. So it, again, it's all about a balance between, um, traveling cars, parked cars, and the trees. This is trying to find the right balance between all those things.
Yeah, I mean, it's tough, cause I think last meeting in July, we, I think you guys mentioned to have Crest be a one-way, and obviously there was a lot of pushback. And then obviously, we're trying to add greenery as well, and the space is very tough.
But I mean, the, the extreme example, this, taking that to the extreme is to remove all the trees to make it easy for the plow driver and create more parking. But that trade-off is that you have fewer trees on the street, so, um, that's what we're trying to strike the right balance between.
Yeah, I mean, don't you guys have a maintenance team that will help with snow in those spots as well?
Is this a good opportunity to get some input from the community? So if you're interested. All right, come on up. Sorry, sorry, I overstepped. Forgot the rules.
Do I, do, just one second. Uh, how many people here are interested in addressing the board? Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight. Okay, um, I'm going to ask you, eight people, to keep your remarks to five minutes or less. When all eight have spoken, if there are any additional people who would like to speak, or if any of the eight would like to add remarks, we can, uh, do we can do that then. But to make sure that everybody gets a chance, please keep your remarks to five minutes. Please speak into the microphone, which is right there at the front. You need to give us your name and your address, and you need to address the board. Not anybody in the audience, and not the applicant at this point.
Yes, my name is Richard Tolarico, I live at thirty-nine Warren Avenue in Chelsea. We, our family bought that house in nineteen forty-five, my grandfather. So it's been a family house for all those years. We've seen a lot of changes up there in the hill, and we had a fight for the school. They're gonna put a school up there, and that's why they run a bus line up to the, I know this is not part of it, but they ran a bus up there, they never had buses go up to the soldiers home before. So the traffic up there is tremendous. And when I come home from shopping on Market Basket, I'm lucky if I get a spot in front of my house to take the bundles in. It's really bad up there. I don't think people realize now, people are coming in from East Boston, they're getting on the bus line, they park their cars on Sommet Ave, jump on the bus, go in town. Because they can park there all day up to twelve o'clock at night till five in the morning. I mean, twelve, twelve at night till five in the morning, they're not supposed to park. But all day, they could be there until they go, go to work. But that's beside the point. The traffic is exceedingly bad. And one, two things that I, I'm eighty-one years old, so you gotta forgive me for a minute. Two things that I had in mind was, the townhouses that are going up there. We were told at the Chelsea meeting at the Merritt Club that there was gonna be seven to nine units. Now here, there's gonna be a little bit more.
We haven't changed those numbers, yeah.
So the numbers have been changed. We're told there was gonna be nine units going in there. So now, these are three-story townhouses. Now, are they rental units or condominiums? They're rental units, okay? And so, what I'm getting at is that, we're gonna have those units there. Are they gonna be able to have enough parking spaces for those places? And are veterans are gonna get the first preference? Now, like a veteran that's from the New England Home of Veterans in Boston on Church Street, are they able to apply to have a, a room there? Because they give to that organization anyways. So that's what I'm saying, that, I was a little concerned about that, that hasn't been brought up about the townhouses. How many units gonna be there, and will they really have parking for them? Because if they don't, they're gonna be down parking next to Billy's house and my sister lives on Warren Ave. So it's kinda like mostly two families and single-family houses there. So, we got enough apartment buildings. On Lafayette, there's two units, not two apartment buildings there? And they park on Sommet Ave, because they don't have enough room in their parking lots. So parking is a, is a serious problem up there in the hill, and it's gotten worse. Especially with the tunnel being inoperative in East Boston. And they've been coming, Webster Ave, you can't get on there at four, at four o'clock in the afternoon. It's backed up past Own Depot. So, it, it's a bad situation up there, and people don't realize how bad it is up there. And that's all they got to say.
Thank you. Who's next?
Can I first ask a quick question of the parking situation? So, all those parking spots in blue are specifically for residents?
For the parking district.
For the parking districts, and all the spots in gray? Yeah.
All the spots in orange are the off-street parking spaces.
Hi. So, I, I see two central figures in this conversation.
Give us your name and your address.
Konstantinos Busios, I live on sixty-nine Eleanor Street in Chelsea, close to the, few, few doors down from Soldiers Home. So, let me, is it okay? So, I see two figures, two central figures in this conversation. One is the veterans, and the other one is Chelsea. Okay. Now, for the veterans, we hear that it is veteran preference. No guarantees, nothing. No plans as to, are there gonna be subsidies? No contracts, no signatures. Are they gonna, no plans that are formal as to if, how long are we gonna advertise it to veterans? How long are we gonna leave a unit open for a veteran to apply? Where are we gonna advertise it? None of that. The only thing that we know is that the three meals per day that the current veterans, the people who live there have, are gonna go away. I know those people, I have met those people repeatedly, and they're disabled, they have, you know, they, they cannot really cook their own meals, they rely on that. Guess what's gonna happen to those people? They're gonna be out. So, we see no plans for the veterans, we just see a promise. Penrose is asking for a blank check from you. They're asking you for a rubber stamping of their plans. They have, they don't have, they have not done their work to come to us and say, here it is for the veterans. Here's what's gonna happen for the veterans. So, that's for the veterans. They're gonna be gone, okay? Second is for Chelsea, and I would like to, to, to pass a, to pass a handout. So, in the first two photographs, you see views of open space. Now, in Chelsea, there is open space, and here it is, it's right there. This is the open space that's gonna be taken away. It's rare in Chelsea, and it's gonna be gone. Chelsea is already the second most dense city in Massachusetts. And we're gonna add to it, of course, why not, right? You were asking about the trees earlier on, how, what else we could do to get the trees. There it is, they are there now, they want them out. Third photograph, please. This is, this this lot there. That one has north of forty parking spots there, that people park. Where are these people gonna park when that goes away? Let alone that, if you see the third photograph, those trees that are on the, on the edge of that, they're gonna be taken down, a lot of them, because there's no room to build where they want to build there. They're gonna have to go out and take trees, down, from there. Now, of course, we're also talking about parking, okay? Penrose is proposing to build one parking spot every two units. One parking spot every two units. And take away some of the parking, some of the parking spots that belong to the city today, to all of us, taking them away, put them part of the parking district. That makes it zero point eighty-two parking spots per unit. But in fact, what they're building is half a parking spot per unit, or one parking spot per two units. Now, the people who are gonna be there, the people who are there today, they get three meals a day. The people who are gonna come there, they're gonna have the kitchens. I have a kitchen, I go shopping, grocery shopping. How do I do that? Do I walk? No, I, I, I get my car. I use, I have much reduced reliance on cars than I used to have, but still, I need it. I need a, I need a car to go grocery shopping, I need the car, a car to go to apple picking with my daughter and my wife. How can we assume that people will not have cars? Where do we live? Like, you know, we use it less, but we need them, so where are they gonna park? Now, I have a question for Mr. DePristi. You say that they have to go in front of the commission, the traffic, you know, the traffic commission. And so, what happens? They get approval from here, they get a rubber stamping from here, and then what happens if the, the commission says, no, we're not giving you parking, parking, the parking region? What's gonna happen? Those people will have nowhere to park? We don't know that, there is no plan on that. Second, if there is any plan that is not very, very binding, in two years from now, there can be another meeting where they ask to have parking, and then that can be granted to them. In which case, we'll all flood, okay? So, I would like to, I mean, I, I have many more points, but I would like to, I would like to close with one short testimonial from a current resident. You can not, you cannot see him, but hopefully, you will hear him.
Your time is up.
It, just a minute, it's one minute.
Your five minutes is up.
Time's up.
Should I stop it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Should I address any of those?
By all means.
Okay, so, in terms of the rental subsidies, we are committed that every existing, every current resident that lives at the veterans home, we're gonna be getting a voucher for that resident. So when they move into a unit, their rent for, will always be capped to thirty percent of their income. That's how the voucher program works. So, every unit that a current resident moves into will have a voucher attached to it. In terms of parking, the, the parking at the town, the lot where the townhouses were built, are currently, it's a lot of staff that park there. And as a part of the, maybe, Abby can speak to this a little bit. There is gonna be a parking garage built for the CLC, and that's where kind of the staff can park. And maybe Abby can talk a little bit about the Commonwealth's oversight of the marketing plan and the, the service plan.
Thank you, so, I'm, I'm Abby Vladik, I work for DCAM, the State Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance. And as Carmen mentioned, we're working with them to, to, to figure this deal out. So in terms of the marketing plan, this is, to back up for a moment, the, the Commonwealth owns this land, the Commonwealth will continue to own this land. Once Penrose has successfully permitted and financed the construction of these buildings, we will enter into a ground lease with them, phase by phase. And there are, as you can imagine, several conditions that they have to meet in order for us to actually execute on that ground lease with them and allow them to begin construction. And one of those is an opportunity to review and comment on the, the marketing plan, the outreach plan. How are they going to make sure that these units are filled with veterans? Robert unfortunately had, had to leave, but he, he did speak to this a moment ago. You know, we're gonna be, we're, we're gonna be in a ninety-nine year relationship with Penrose, right? This is not, you know, we hand you the keys and we, we trust you, good, good luck. We do trust you, but, trust but verify, right? So we're gonna be, you know, every year, we're gonna be looking at, what does the waiting list look like? You know, who are the, are you, are you reaching the right communities? Are you, are you reaching the veterans? And, and the Executive Office of Veteran Services will have a seat at the table for ninety-nine years of administration of, of these sites. Is there something else you wanted me to talk to you? Oh, and the services plan, right. And so, in addition, another condition to entering into the ground lease with Penrose is a services plan that ensures that the residents who will be living in, in those, in the Penrose facilities in the future, will, will be well-served and will have their needs well-served. Beginning with the hundred and twenty-five or so residents who are currently there today. But, that it's, it's a plan that's gonna evolve over ninety-nine years. We know that the, the demographics of the veterans population is changing. And so, their, their needs are gonna change, and the kinds of services that will, will best speak to them will change. And so that, that will also be part of the ongoing relationship that we'll have over, over the ninety-nine years of the lease. You know, we, they, they really are onsite frequently, talking to residents, and they, they have heard from everyone this question, right, about what happens when three meals a day aren't provided? And it is, it is something that we're working with them on. We've also heard from some residents who are excited to have their own kitchens, excited to be in a, in a, in a place that allows them to have pets. So, that's, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll be, we'll be side by side with them through the ground lease for, for ninety-nine years.
Good evening, Norealisa Jesus, District Counselor for District Three in Chelsea, three seventy-three Crescent Ave. First of all, thank you guys for the work that you do on this board and for your commitment to the community and our families of Chelsea. I just have, just, I have just three very brief comments. First and foremost, my sister counselor, Melinda Vega, who is the representative for that district, apologizes for not being present. I am working with her currently since the first site visit that we did with our counselors, and were able to see the site and how beautiful it is and some of the projects that are there. We were having conversations. Chelsea is not new to these redevelopment projects. As many of you guys know, the Central Ave redevelopment project is something that is still ongoing, but it kinda was one of the first sort of conversations that stirred up, at least in the time that I've been around. In that, in that time, when these conversations, and I'm having flashbacks, listening to all the comments and watching you guys deliberate and ask questions and all that, in that time, I was an organizer, I wasn't a counselor. And as an organizer, being on the ground with the families, the biggest thing that came up, and is something that many of you mentioned, is inclusion, authentic inclusion of the community. Whether it's the people who are living in the current building, or the people who are living in the surrounding area. Thinking about how this project, this beautiful project, right? Because we know that there is a lot of housing and properties in Chelsea that need projects that redevelop it so people have decent homes and are able to sleep at night feeling comfortable. And it, it presents that sense of mental health, stability and, and all of that. But, we need to think about the, the models that have been used. And for example, not too long ago, the governor was in Chelsea, she presented her bonds bill. And in her bonds bill, she actually includes the pilot project we did here in Chelsea as an example for the state of Massachusetts. And what that bond bill request is that there is not just community meetings at local function halls or community input through canvassing the area, but actually building a council and actually having tenants and current residents on the decision-making table, right? Because then, that's when you get those comments of, well, there are folks who need three meals a day, not just one. That's when you get the insight perspective of folks who are currently living there. And also, it, it, it brings a sense of dignity and respect, right? Knowing that the current residents are on the table, building this beautiful project and, and being part of that decision-making process at the same time. The, the last thing I wanna add is, we are still dealing as a municipality with the aftermath of all of the chaos that happened with the destruction phase at Central Ave, right? And not everything can be perfect, and you can't please everyone. But I think there are things that we can learn from that project, that we can definitely try to prevent or implement some structures to support those residents who will be. I'm, I'm really happy to hear that there will be less demolition with this project than there is in the current project that we have at Central Ave. But, but please do take into consideration some of the feedback that we have received in Central Ave of some of the concerns with parking and, and things like that. Lastly, again, I just wanna emphasize, these are the projects that we need in Chelsea. Projects that are going to redevelop units that are affordable, and that will be able to maintain affordable. I know that my sister counselor is not here, but one thing she wants to emphasize as well is exactly getting to the nitty-gritty details of that voucher that was shared, right? Is there a scale? Is there a certain amount of years where all of a sudden, there's a different rate? Like, we need to know these details, because they're going to impact the families that are living there, not just today, but four years from now, right? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor, if I could just, that's very helpful in terms of the resident engagement. One thing that the board should know is that we are actually planning to meet with each and every individual resident, and we've done that, we're trying to do it in small groups. There's a hundred and twenty-two residents that are there now, we've met with up to seventy-eight, up, oh, maybe over eighty. And so that process is ongoing, where we're actually meeting with each individual resident and trying to get a sense of what their needs and desires are. So, that's, that's a process we're actually being actively engaged in. So that's, that's a process we're actually being actively engaged in.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Clark. I live at seventy-three Warren Ave. Four houses down from where this fourteen-unit townhouse, eighteen, however many there are. First, I'd just like to add, everybody was concerned about the snow plowing with these bumpouts. What about street cleaning? Have you ever seen the streets of Chelsea when street cleaning day? Some days I'm ecstatic, just knowing they're going to come down and clean my street. There's no way that street sweeper is going to get in between each bumpout to be able to clean those streets. Who's going to clean, clean the streets? Because the residents aren't able to get out there and clean them, so I just want to bring that to the attention. Also, Summit Ave is known as a speedway. It goes from Webster Ave all the way down to Franklin Ave. There'd be cars sometimes clocked fifty miles an hour going down the street. There's a police officer that leaves on the street. Several firefighters have asked for these speed bumps to try and control it. At the very top of the street is this blind driveway where these fourteen houses, a major roadway, is going to be coming out with these cars speeding up. And the car that's speeding up the hill is nowhere going to see this car that's exiting from this parking lot of these fourteen townhouses. I heard you mention your question or concern about a tot lot? A tot lot at the top of Summit Ave that's going to accompany the families that live in the fourteen townhouses that's right on the fifty mile an hour stretch that they zoom back and forth, back and forth? You really need to consider this project. If it is a concern and all about the veterans and approving the services, how come immediately the veterans, it's coming at the expense to them? My dad was a resident there for six years. I visited there weekly. Without those three meals a day, some of them could barely walk over there to get their food to be able to survive. A lot of them used it as socialization. That was the only time that they were able to get out and socialize with other people and share their meal with them and then go back home. Without that, they're going to have a lot more issues besides just not being able to survive on food. Yes, they're going to have a kitchen. I guarantee you, the vast minority of the people are excited to be able to cook in their own kitchen, because right now, those meals aren't at an expense to them. They may get a voucher, but immediately they're going to have utility expenses that they don't have now. They're going to have to go to Market Basket or wherever and food shop for those meals that they don't need to now. And it's interesting that they mentioned that there's going to be a cafe. And I had a conversation with two residents there who said, oh yeah, they're all excited and trying to sell us on a coffee shop. He said, I can't even afford a Starbucks coffee. So they're trying and putting forward that it's going to be a better, a benefit, the veterans are going to benefit. And the majority of them up there are already concerned about the impacts financially, mentally, socially. I don't think I need to remind everybody that the veterans are who we, what we have today and who we are because of them. And there's very, very few places that are strictly and only guaranteed for the veterans. They need the services. Their, their buildings might be dilapidated, but they're getting the services that are vital to them to survive. And this project and this company is coming forward asking you to literally rob them of the basic things that they need in life to survive. Because they're not, a lot of them and most of them are not able to survive on their own, and they depend on these services. And although they sit here and they say, we're hearing them, we're going to propose this, there's nothing in writing, there's no contracts, there's no guarantees what those services are going to have, and you know as well as I, once they get that signed paper and their approval, they forget about who the veterans are a year, two years, three years from now, and there'll be no turning back at that point. So I just, I just hope and think and thank you for listening to all of us, but just remember the veterans, who they are and what they stand for today, because veterans will never die off.
Hi, my name is Victor Tieran, and I live at fifty-nine Eleanor Street. And I echo what my fellow residents have said about this project, but there's a couple of things I'd like to highlight. One is that this is the fourth presentation I've been to by Penrose, and it seems like every time when they're asked basic questions about their project, they are either unprepared or scrambling to answer some questions that a project of this complexity really should have been figured out already. But specifically, I would like to address the idea of the green space, which is where the, where they, they're calling it the East Parcel, and earlier in the presentation they called it an empty lot. I think that's an inaccurate way to refer to that place. It's actually a field that, there's trees and bushes there, and it's a place now where, where residents and neighbors are able to meet each other. I've met, walking my dog up there, I've met staff and residents, and there's also like a beautiful view, I think that photograph shows, the view of the harbor and the airport, and it would be a shame if that space was lost. I've heard a number of times in their presentation that they're adding trees, they're adding green space. These areas, they're, they're existing green space. What I see is they're only subtracting green space, they're not adding any green space. And where the townhouses are, and it showed in the, in one of their earlier things, where they circled the area where the townhouse and that parking lot is going to be, they're taking out a significant stand of trees. There's decades of tree growth behind that parking lot, and they need to cut those trees down to push that parking lot back and build those townhouses. Also, as my fellow resident pointed out, that the parking in front of those townhouses would be a harrowing place to park. Not only do cars really not fit there, but there's a few blind spots, no matter what speed you're traveling up Summit. So I think that whole townhouse area is problematic, and I think that East Parcel area is problematic. They mentioned that they weren't permitted to put the building higher than the existing buildings, but what they neglected to mention is the grade drops dramatically as you go to the end of that East Parcel area. So if you're looking at it from far away, I can see there's an even line across. But if you're standing there, you're seeing a more imposing building than any other buildings on that street. So I think the solution to the problem with the trees at the bumpouts and the green space is to leave the existing field and that stand of trees there, and even plant more trees in the East Parcel. Finally, I'd like to mention that, living down the hill from this space, we know that even with some minor construction and tree removal that's happening on the hill above us, we're seeing an increased amount of groundwater. Our sump pumps are more active, and there's even some mud spots that have shown up in people's yards. And with this level of construction, both on the Eleanor Street side, on the Summit and Warren Ave Street side, I don't see how there couldn't be more and more groundwater released and rushing down those hills to, into our basements and into our yards. So I would suggest that you guys do not, do not issue this permit now without some questions being answered, more definition of the project, and some possible redesign of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Madeline Scammell, fifty-nine Eleanor Street. And I actually came up here to read a statement from Roberto Jimenez, but I'm first going to say something from me, which is that I walk up this area every day, multiple times a day, I have a dog, and it's peaceful. It's really nice. That East Parcel is a gift. I heard one resident say it should be a peace park. It should be a place where people with PTSD can go and just be. It's not orchestrated, it's not lively, but there are benches, there's bird feeders in the trees, and it's, it's going to be a really sad day if that is developed into a four-story building. Oh gosh, that's not Roberto. Okay, Roberto Jimenez. My name is Roberto Jimenez. I live at forty Eleanor Street. My main concern is that this new design for the Soldiers' Home entails removing services from veterans that have been living there for years and who are expecting to live there for years and receive services for the last years of their lives. We have to make sure these residents continue not just to have a place to live, but continue to receive these services. Changing the service model to something less than the support they have now is going to make the current veterans, many of whom are disabled or either, either displaced because they're not getting adequate resources, or remain in a completely different situation where they don't get the services they need. The current model allows for a middle ground where they have adequate supports but retain a good degree of independence. If you switch it to become entirely independent and unsupported, the veterans who are sick and disabled and count on the services aren't going to be able to stay in their homes. Removing three meals a day means that disabled veterans will have to make their own way to the store, potentially get their own cars, adding to the parking demand. I also have major concerns about what this means for the many union jobs that currently support our residents at the Soldiers' Home. Many of these workers also live in Chelsea. We should be protecting these workers, or at the very least, providing support to them and finding new jobs. It would be much better to have a tiered transition to this new model of housing, allow vets who are living there to continue to receive services until they choose to move somewhere else or pass away, and then fully eliminate the services currently provided and fully switch to the new model. But this is forcibly removing services right from under them, and we should not do this. Privatization or so-called private partnerships, I'm sorry. Privatization or so-called public-private partnerships in general are problematic, not innovative like people claim. It's frustrating to see our government ignoring its responsibility to care for our citizens and handing that over to for-profit corporations because it can't be bothered to direct resources to the people who need it most. This is not right. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Mal Bruce. I live at fifty-one Summit Avenue. I just have, a few things they already said, I'm just going to repeat again, and then there's a few other things. Will you come up on Summit Avenue, you guys mostly must all live in Chelsea, when you come from Webster Ave and go up Summit Avenue, before you get to where the townhouses are going to be, it turns like this. So those thirteen parking spots out of there, drive up there tomorrow morning when everyone's parked, and see if you can get by when another car's coming downhill. You will not be able to. I live at fifty-one, and I go up there every morning. And when you get to the crosswalk there, most of the nurses park there for City Hall, I mean, for Soldiers' Home, they can't cross the street because the traffic is that bad there in the morning. In the afternoon, the same thing. That's just one of the things. The other thing, the East Parcel over there, I walk my dog there every day. It's nice, it's peaceful, like this lady already said, very calm, relaxing. My dog loves it, I love it. Sit on the bench, nice, all right? And that's basically it. Okay, but the most, the most important thing is the parking there. Those thirteen spots do not exist. Go drive up there tomorrow morning, and you tell me what you think.
My name is Billy Clark. I live at seventy-three Warren Avenue. My concern is, one of my big concern is the water problem. We live in this hill, and we have nothing but water problems. My house, every house there. And like what the gentleman said, the sump pumps are going full blast. I hope that they're going to come up with a reasonable situation to get this all taken care of, because when you're, when you're, when it's really raining out, I live in Warren Ave, when it's really raining, the water builds up on Summit Ave, right on the corner. And when it's finally built up, it pours down towards Warren Avenue. Most of the time, it floods out one of the apartment buildings on the right-hand side. Me and my wife, we look out the window, it comes down, and, and it's unbelievable, it looks like a river. So I hope they're going to come up with that problem, fix that problem. Number two is, we've got to remember something. This hill is called, I've been in Chelsea my whole life, it's called the Soldiers' Home. You know, the soldiers, this is all for the veterans. You should not take anything away from them, you should give them everything that they deserve. If it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be standing here right now arguing this. For our, you know, they gave us our freedom. But you want to put them in places and you want to take things away from them, you should give them everything they want, and there should be no questions asked. And another, one thing about the, where the headquarters is, when you drive down the street, those old buildings, those buildings are beautiful. I hope that we don't take that away. I mean, you drive down that street, the brick buildings, they just, it's just something that looks fantastic. If you're going to take that away, you might as well just, just tear the buildings down and start all over again. Thank you.
Anybody else? Ah, Counselor.
Leo Robinson, eighty-three Warren Avenue, also the president of City Council of Vietnam Vet. My concern, and I'd like to put on the table, one of the things I haven't heard, we keep talking about the subsidies, I want to see a commitment from Penrose, the state, and the veterans who are living at the home right now, guaranteeing those hundred and twenty-three veterans that they will be taken care of. The only way that can happen is a three-way contract between everybody in order for this project to move forward.
Thank you, Counselor, and thanks, everybody, for your comments. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Does the board have questions of the applicant, petitioner, sorry? Hearing none, okay.
So you'll be, you'll be asked to vote on the special permit for the use, the recommendations through the zoning board, the special permit for the use. You won't be able to vote on the site plan because I didn't advertise it in time, so that will have to be continued to the November meeting.
Guess I'll open the floor to the petitioners if there's any responses to community feedback.
I mean, well, we can talk about a couple of things. I mean, one of the things with the, the parking itself, you know, the parking district was a way to accommodate the neighborhood. And I think at the, at the session we were before, I think people felt really good about the changes we'd made, that we'd heard, we got, when we got feedback informally from both your board and the zoning board about the changes. So that parking district is a way to accommodate the neighborhood in the sense of saying, you know, the, the veterans would park in these parking districts and wouldn't be allowed to park in the other for that. And, you know, the residents, the veterans that are there now, you know, use those spaces, and so this is simply preserving, preserving that way. I appreciated the comment about the historic nature. Something to keep in mind, I mean, these buildings are, you know, over a hundred years old, they're falling apart. And what we're really trying to do is infuse them and make them last for another hundred years. And what you see here with a lot of these requirements is with you putting on the, you know, that's one thing, is to make these last for another hundred years. I think you've heard multiple times how committed we are to the services, to creating services for the veterans. Our whole program has an entire building, a resource building that's committed to that. We have an agreement with the state to cover all the services. We're working in partnership, we're constantly talking with them, we're meeting with all the residents to understand what their needs and desires are. So none of these residents, none of these veterans are going to left behind in any way, shape or form. And I think you've heard that multiple times. I think you've heard it from DCAM, you've heard it from the director of the agency. We're a hundred percent We're a hundred percent committed to these, to these veterans, we're a hundred percent committed to making it a veterans-only facility. That's the, that's the whole reason we're here. Um, and the idea is that, you know, these buildings are falling apart, and we're trying to save them for another hundred years for the people that, that, that served our country. Um, and that's our goal, and that's our mission, and that's what we're trying to do. And that's what we've done from day one when we, when we went after this proposal. It was really important to us, from all our team's perspective, to participate in this project because it was a veterans' project. That's what got people really motivated about this. One of the things you see on the site plan is it's, it's a challenging, uh, site plan in the sense of particularly because it's a historic site. So we have to, we have to maintain the buildings that are there, and we want to maintain those buildings. We're trying to get to a critical mass to serve, uh, a large number of veterans. That's why we have the East Building, and that's why we have the townhomes. That was the Commonwealth's desire. I think we all saw the Spotlight article in the paper, uh, this weekend about the incredible need for housing across our entire state. Um, and so, you know, that's why we're proposing, um, those buildings there and on, and on those locations. Um, with respect to the, you know, the, um, the trees, uh, one of the big comments we heard, I think it was from this board in particular, was that people did not like the one-way street. And, um, so we said, you know, that was something that was, we thought was really valuable, but we heard loud and clear that that was something that people wanted, so we went back and, and made it a two-way street. And that's what created these tree, trees and these tree, tree islands. So we're, if, if those are a real problem as well, we're, we're happy to take a look and take those out. We think it, it would, it adds a tremendous amount to, to the property. Um, when you look at the property today, um, it's, it's tired and it's old, and it lacks a lot of landscaping. And this, this plan is, is trying to, to do that. What we, we know we don't have all the answers to all these questions, and I don't think that was necessarily the goal. We're, we're, we're trying to get approval for the use, and we're trying to get approval for the general site plan. And, you know, the other, the other things need to be continually worked on and worked out. Um, and that's what we're committed to do, and I think there's a process to do that with your board, with the, um, with the zoning board, and with the, um, building inspector as we move these things forward. So, um, you know, we're happy to, to, you know, provide some additional details on these things and do that as we move forward. But, you know, we want to be clear that we're, um, you know, we're trying to get some initial feedback on what you think this should be and what it should look like. Um, and then we'll go forward from there based on what your recommendations are in terms of the changes we would make to the plan.
Right. We, we, uh, this evening are going to, um, vote on a recommendation to the, for the, uh, special permit. Um, and in November, we will do the site plan review. So, uh, one way or the other, can I have a motion regarding the recommendation for the special permit?
May I make a clarification?
Oh, yes.
It's, it's not just the use, it's also your, this is coming to you as a plan development. And under a plan development, you're looking at the site in a holistic manner. And under plan development, all dimensional regulations, building height, setback, open space, everything related to dimensional, is comes, is approved by the ZBA through a special permit. So you're providing them a recommendation on that as well.
So that would mean, you know, uh, making a recommendation for approval would mean accepting, or that we're recommending this plan as it's been presented to us?
Could I? Yeah, I mean, if there are, you know, we're, if there are still questions, like you had questions about what the siding of the building looked like and all that stuff, we're, we're happy to make some changes and come back if that's helpful. Like, if people feel they wanna see more information, we can, we can do that. So we don't, yeah.
There's a few people that came through, and they talked about the park and the East Passage and whatnot. Are there any, is there like, any, obviously, I know you're very limited with space. Is there any, like, greener-y space that you can kind of give back to the community? Uh, whether it be like a dog park or just some open space?
Well, I guess, yeah. I mean, if that's what you guys, if you, if there's some different things you want us to go and look at and come back to you with, we can do that. I mean, we, the, and we, you know, well, do you wanna talk about the?
Yeah, I mean, I think the goal of the community play area is that it is meant to be inviting to the community and to be, uh, I guess, designed in a way where it signals, uh, that this is open to the public coming, uh, to utilize the amenities there. Uh, I think that was our intent for the community play area.
So like, that play area is just gonna be like, um, like a swing set and like turf? Or is, is there planned to be like actual grass and trees and shrubs and whatnot?
It, it's gonna be a, a mix, and because there is topography, uh, if we leave it as planted, uh, that means that it's going to be kind of more like a lawn that is a hill. So our goal of, that's why it's not quite green, is that there will be green there. But, uh, I think there has been interest from the residents for a dog park also. So I think, uh, but I also understand that at Malone Park, there's plans to be a dog park. So, uh, if there is enough demand for there to be two dog parks within a block of each other, I think a dog park is something that we can accommodate here. But the reason why it's kind of, the ground is not green and under the community play area is because that it is, uh, the topography means that if you leave it as planted, then it's just a lawn that you can't really utilize aside, yeah, it's less usable that way.
So, like I said, we're open to coming back if people want us to look at some of these things. We don't want people to need some more time.
Are motions? Uh, well.
I'll put a motion out.
All right.
I'll put a motion with a lot of restrictions, and I mean a lot of restrictions, uh, to, for the special permit to move forward. I mean, obviously, we, we don't have a lot of choice, but I wanna move on to the next step. So I vote for.
To approve.
To approve, the site plan.
May I, may I make recommendations for, uh, conditions?
Do you have a thing?
Yes, and if I could think of others, believe me, I would.
So, uh, my recommendations for our conditions are standard conditions as applicable, design review, uh, address the comments of the fire department and the public works, a landscape maintenance plan, a, um, BMP stormwater maintenance plan, construction management plan, uh, apply for the veterans' parking district and implement as approved. Um, and any condition of the site plan approval is a condition of the special permit.
And I would like to add what Leo mentioned, if we can.
And what is that? I'm sorry.
A three-way con, I want something in writing about the veterans and the guaranteeing.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
I don't think we can do that.
Can't hurt to ask. That's my attitude. I'm sure we can't, I, 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 I'd like what the president of the city council said, where he wants a three-way agreement between the city, that's the government and, and Penrose. To guarantee that those hundred-and-twenty-five veterans are gonna be able to stay in, and, and we're gonna look at what the system can be.
And receive the services they're currently getting.
A verbal agreement is almost, it's nice to hear, but very hard to enforce.
I would also like to add one other requirement to that, to have a ride-share program. Whatever measures we can take to de-incentivize, you know, adding more vehicles to the mix, is what we should be looking at.
Yeah, for transportation, Soldieron does operate vans, and we know that transportation is a key issue for the veterans and that they need to get the doctor's appointments, they need to get the market basket, they need to get to all these places. So there is a space on our plan for a small van, like a ten-nine-seater van, um, and there will be transportation services.
Sorry, Mimi, I'm sorry, I'm just not understanding what you're asking for.
I'm asking.
And that, because I need to word this, if you're, if it's going to be approved, I need to word it.
I would like to be able to have something in writing le, uh, binding the city, the state, and Penbrook to, uh, uh, protecting the veterans in the, in the establishment of there. Don't know if we can do it? Can't hurt to ask.
I think she's saying, you know, that something that would legally obligate Penrose to not only, you know, maintain housing for the veterans currently living at the home, but to also guarantee that they will receive the services that they are currently getting after the development has, has gone online. So that even, you know, if they're receiving three meals a day from, from the facility, that even if they're moving into a studio or one bedroom, that they will continue getting those meals.
A ninety-nine-year lease is a very long lease. Sullivan's in, in, in Southie has a ninety-nine-year lease. And that is, and, and the city, you know, and Sullivan's is, you know, Cambridge has, there's lots of things with ninety-nine leases. It's very nice, it's very romantic, none of us will be here in ninety-nine years. I wanna make sure.
Make that a requirement.
You're very optimistic. So, you know, there's lots of ways to get around it. I wanna just put it out there and see what we can do. I think it's a great idea.
Mimi, I just, I don't believe that we have the authority to make that kind of condition in making a recommendation to ZBA that they approve of the special permit. I don't, I don't think that legally we are capable of making such a stipulation.
I think it's very unlikely that would hold up in the scrutiny.
They could challenge it.
Uh, yeah, do we want the city spending that money?
Do you really want, do you really want them to challenge it, to go against the vets?
I agree in principle, but this sounds like a contract as opposed to a condition on approvals, like, what are services?
We can make a condition.
What's the timeline?
They go into negotiations.
I, all I'm saying is that, as much as I love this Commonwealth of Massachusetts, let's just look at the T, let's look at the Big Dig, let's look at all the other projects that they, you know, that, I'll never forget Sullivan's, that's like, kills me, every year, kills me. There's lots of, I want some, I want some written guarantees in this stuff. I wanna protect the vets. I think it's really important to protect them.
With regard to the design review?
Mimi, I, I, I am concerned that I don't know if the board has that authority. However, if it's okay with the petitioner, I, this is just a recommendation to the ZBA. They could take it whole or in part, or they can ignore it. I can put it in as part of the recommendation with the understanding that I will run it by the city solicitor. And if the city solicitor says we can, we include it. If they say we can't, we will not include it in the recommendation to the ZBA. I do understand that this will involve more than one state agency and, which will probably require a considerable amount of review before those agencies could say yes or no. So it could significantly delay the project, or more likely result in, no, we won't do it. No, we won't agree to such an agreement.
Thank, that's all I'm asking. Thanks. That's all I'm asking.
All right, we'll, we'll put it in, and, and just as John outlined it.
Yeah, but, thank you.
But John also did say, you know, if the petitioner is, I mean.
I get it, it can fail. I'm just saying, I want it in.
How do you feel about us adding this as, you know, that it needs to, whether or not is it's include, you know, this stipulation is included in the recommendation to ZBA needs, we need to at least hear, I mean, John would need to at least hear from the city solicitor as to whether or not that is legally permissible. And if it's not, then it would not be included in the recommendation going to ZBA.
All right, we have a motion, uh, we have.
I have one more provision. Um, and I'm not, this would be a design review, part of the design review, although I'm not sure if it would be special permit or site plan. But I would recommend that five years into the development, we revisit Crest Ave. Because I think there will be a lot of changes in the meantime. Perhaps there won't be as much demand for cars. Um, you know, we will have some time to have, look, we'll have the chance to look at how this plan is performing, as far as traffic and perhaps the desire for more trees. Um, I would just suggest that we put in a provision to revisit Crest Ave.
If they, if they, if there are changes proposed to this plan, they have to come before, back before the city in any case. But, so do you, are you suggesting something, are you suggesting something more than that?
Is there some avenue to, I mean, we could put this proposed idea with the site plan review and have a chance to discuss it between now and then?
Or is it, or is it possible to just approve everything except the changes to Crest Ave? And then come back to that in a future point in time?
Well, that's part of the site plan approval, which we're not going to address tonight.
But in five years, the, the project will be mostly complete. And are you then saying that once it's complete, they will have to make changes if, if it determines that that something is, something has created a alternative reality at that point? Or a different reality?
I guess it's not feasible.
All right, Sarah, right? Not quite.
I'm not quite clear on how we would address that, yeah.
May I ask a clar, are you, are you thinking that you might want to be a one-way street in five years from now? Or is that what you're getting at here?
No, I think there's, there's some, there's a lot of, um, different factors that will change over time, right? You know, there's a huge demand for car, for parking. That demand might lessen over time, especially if we have a ride-share program that's doing well. The other condition that might wanna be revisited is the two-way street, if that is, um, you know, causing more traffic up through that zone than they would like to have.
But that's, that's something that, over time, they would bring before Traffic and Parking Commission.
Okay.
You know, if that's something, like, if they were to find, you know, that the traffic is not as, you know, that it, it changes in any way, um, you know, they would be able to bring a petition to the Traffic and Parking Commission to, I mean, it happens regularly with city councilors or residents bringing requests to change, you know, to make a street a one-way street. You know, so I don't think that's anything that we need to, um, make a condition.
Opposing views on that, and they're both valid. So that's, that's my response. I would like to make a recommendation to approve the project with the standard conditions as applicable, with the design review process, which would also, you know, look at materiality of the structures. And what was, what was the other design review?
Well, everything John outlined earlier, you would second it. Because I think Mimi made the.
I think Sarah would second it.
Right.
Yeah, Mimi made.
That was a second fight, Sarah.
And addressing the comments of the fire department and Department of Public Works.
Okay, made and seconded. Everybody understand?
But where, where are we with, you know, wanting the guarantees for the veterans? Are we leaving, I mean?
I guess, I guess, a question, I guess, is the model for the lottery system changing? From now until?
What was the question?
The, the lottery system for vets, like, to get, yeah, for, for housing, is that changing? Yeah, so I guess we just want the current status quo, which I think you guys are already providing, right?
No, I think the other concern that has been, um, brought forward by, well, Mimi's brought it up and, you know, members, other people who spoke are about the services. and, you know, members, other people who spoke are about the services that veterans currently receive. It's, to me, it sounded, people were very concerned about the, the meals that veteran, they're provided, that that continue, even if, you know, they're moved into a studio or one bedroom where they will have a kitchen. It was pointed out, you know, that that would involve them incurring costs more than what they, you know, that they don't currently bear. You know, so there is, there's a desire that those, that's, I think particularly that service for, you know, with the meal service, that that continue for the existing residents.
Yeah, I mean, John, I guess, do we have?
I, but that's what I've said, I don't, I don't know that we can.
Because obviously that pulls in a bunch of different.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't believe you have the right to put, to put that as a condition.
I would hope though, having heard, you know, from us and the members of the community here and, you know, our, our city council president, that this is something, um, of great importance and of great value to everyone here, everybody, you know, I think you could go all over Chelsea and the residents are going to say this is something that must remain for the, for the veterans. For the, again, I would say for the existing residents of the home. The new people coming in, they're going to have different expectations. But for the, the people who are currently living there, you can't take away something that they are currently receiving. So I hope you will take that on board and make, you know, make, make that commitment that they will continue receiving the meal services and any other services that they are currently getting. So. So I would, I will, you know.
No.
What?
Did you vote no?
No, I was going to say, I, I would vote yes to make the recommendation.
All right, so.
With all of the conditions that John has outlined.
All in favor of the motion with the conditions we have enumerated?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion is carried unanimously.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the, the next steps are?
So you'll go to the ZBA on November fourteenth?
Fourteenth.
And then come back to this board here on November twenty-eighth for the major site plan review.
For the site plan review, okay, great, thank you.
Uh, we're going to have a five-minute recess.
Presentations, speed it up. How does he speed it up?
Yeah, I, I wasn't, you know, the people who are doing that or want to build that laboratory building on Everett Avenue, that's the way a presentation should be made to a group of citizens who, you know, between the three of us, they don't, you know, what do we know? It's a model. Then I have enough money. Uh, resume. Uh, the next order of business is case twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one at one one-five Willow Street. Petitioner?
Yes, sir.
Tell us your tale.
Um, good evening, sir and madam. And excuse my language, I probably do not understand as much as, you know, uh, English. And, uh, hopefully I could try to understand. And please ask, I mean, when you talk, please talk, um, clearly and slowly. Thank you, my name is Raza Khonchem, um, my address is one fifteen Willow Street. Thank you. And this is my wife, Sarah Gao Koc. And what we would like to get help, hopefully not too much trouble for all of you to help us, is we trying to get approval to get a driveway curb cut, so we can have a, a three-car driveway. So the big problem, in case winter time come, we'd be able to park inside the driveway. So that is the, um, big problem that we might face during the winter time. And, um, so that's how we'd like to ask you a favor to grant us a permit to do that. Thank you.
Is there currently tuck under parking?
Pardon me?
Are those existing parking spaces under the building?
Yes, there are two car garage underneath the building, but it seem like it pretty low, you know, yes. In case, like, new car version, it's might not, the bigger car might not fit in there and might, that is shorter inside the garage there, it only fit like smaller car.
Okay. Is, is this area already paved, where you want to create?
Yes, it's already paved all the way to the back.
Is the building occupied at a, here's it isn't?
It's not, it's not, we just bought the building, um, this January and we in a process of getting a permit to, to rebuild the house, the property. And then we want to leave one of that floor because it a good size, it's a good open space for my children. But we do not have parking, so it's a problem.
So currently there, go ahead, Jessica.
Is the parking going to be for one unit or for the entire building?
Oh, for entire building. We can fit, uh, fit three cars there in the driveway.
Okay.
Yes.
My question is, are you proposing to expand the curb cut or move the curb cut?
One side is already a curb that go into the garage in the basement. We only ask to cut one side to expand, so we can drive into the driveway.
So it would be all curb cut in front of the house?
And how many units are you going to put in the new, when you renovate, how many apartments?
It's only existing two unit.
And are you going to keep it two units?
Yes.
Okay.
So in essence, we would lose a street parking spot by expanding this, is that what I'm understanding?
It's only lose one spot where we cut the curb there for the driveway. And then we be able to park three cars inside there.
Okay. That would not be an unreasonable request to cut the curb, although, like, my question is, can you infill the curb in front of the house? If those garage, um, you know, if the garages are no longer useful and you restore the curb in front of the house, and that would, we would not have to lose a parking spot?
We would like to keep the garage because their car that's smaller, they'll be able to fit in there. We not be able to fit the big pickup truck and stuff, but we be able to fit the smaller car inside the garage. So at least we got two cars in the garage, the existing garage there.
Is the, is the actual building can, is it can, condemned?
Pardon me?
They, they just bought it, they're going to reconstruct it.
And keep, and keep it two family?
Yeah.
All right, so they're going to?
We, we put the building, um, apply for a permit already, so, um, we still in the process of getting the permit.
And, okay, and fixing it up and everything inside, okay?
Yes, sir.
My, my understanding is when someone seeks relief for parking, they relinquish their privileges to have a street parking sticker, is it, am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, and you understand?
We understand that, yes. But we prefer to have a parking, but, I mean, better than a sticker because a sticker in winter time, sometime when there's no emergency, it doesn't do any good with the sticker because we have no place to park.
I mean, it's, that, you know, I saw one of the reasons for rejection is that it would reduce the amount of open space, but it's already paved.
But open space can be paved. The, the definition of usable open space is that it is at, at least ten feet wide on, on any side. It doesn't say anything, that, it doesn't say that it can't be paved.
I, I agree, I don't, I'll make the motion that we, um, recommend approval of, of this.
Subject to condition?
Subject to the usual conditions, um, so the standard conditions. You understand that if you are granted, um, this variance that you will not be able, you, neither you nor anybody living in that bill, in that house will be able to participate in the city's resident sticker program?
Yes, I understand that, yes.
And, um, I understand that you, the concerns raised by Department of Public Works have been shared with you?
You've got a copy of my report, I'll send it to you.
Oh, oh, oh.
Okay, um, and that also, that, uh, an opaque fence is to be installed to prevent the vehicle.
to prevent the vehicle, car lights from shining on the, the house, into the house next door.
On the fence between my property to the next property.
You need a fence to cover your driveway.
Yes, we can put wood fence there or something like that, yes.
Okay. So, I mean, with those conditions, I will move that we, um, make the recommendation that the, I, I would like to add one more condition to that, and that would be to require a permeable paving. And the reason is, this sets a bad precedent. I mean, if everyone in Chelsea were to pave, you know, create a curb cut and to pave their whole property, we'd have an even worse, um, groundwater runoff problem. So I would suggest that we, that you would replace the current paving with permeable pavers or some form of permeable pavement. So the water soaks through and doesn't send the runoff to your neighbor's yard.
But, um, um, I'm not sure because I, I read the, um, the existing paper that I received that whatever the, uh, existing sidewalk that there, they, after the work done, we had to replace the, it, the same material, exactly the same like.
Not the sidewalk, but the portion within your yard.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, like gravel.
There's several different options for materials, but as long as the water soaks through it.
Um, the existing is already paved there.
I realize that. I realize that. But again, this is setting a bad precedent. And I think it would be a fair compromise.
I'm, I'm pretty skeptical of that condition because there is a paved driveway in place and it would cost them to take it up and replace it from scratch. I think I'd be open to it if they be creating a driveway from scratch, but I think it's just a condition that's gonna create financial hardship.
I think it's the least we can ask. This is not something, I, I don't want to see one person come before this board and ask if they can pave their yard for a parking spot. It creates problems for everyone around them and not to mention it diminishes the aesthetics of someone's yard.
It isn't creating a problem though. It's a problem that exists. They're paving over grass.
I think what Sarah's, I think that some people, maybe what Sarah's alluding to is that some people pave their driveways, they pave their yards even without creating a curb cut and asking for relief, and they don't have to get approval to do that. And then people just store cards in their, cars in their, in their driveway, in their, um, their yard. And this is a way to disincentivize that.
Correct. And if another neighbor were to come before the board and ask for the same thing, we would require the permeable pavement.
After, I mean, at the end of the property.
We've got a building that will take a lot of money to renovate. So to redo the driveway is not that, I'm, I don't think it's a big financial hardship. If we were looking at like a, how, uh, the building across the street and they say you have to tear it up, but we're talking about a house that is going to need a lot of work, so I think he can easily figure out how to get the driveway.
Yeah.
Eric, it's one small measure that this community can, um, help with the stormwater runoff problem that is getting worse and worse every year.
Overall, I am pretty critical of approving a curb cut for any property that's condemned. I, I think it should be a condition that the actual property is, is, uh, is, is rehabbed to a suitable state. Um, yeah. Overall, I don't think I'll be approving a curb cut for a condemned property. It just seems like it's setting bad precedent. Like, let's keep the property condemned and construct a driveway.
Well, I can't support the project otherwise, so.
Well, I'll second Sarah's motion to approve the curb cut with the, or.
To include the permeable.
I, I made the initial motion.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, uh, to, uh.
So your, no, your motion has been, these are standard conditions. Sarah made a motion recommendation to include permeables. This lady seconded that.
Sarah's motion?
Yes.
Well, yeah, to add it to your.
Okay, with the, with the condition. So basically we have two.
Yeah, I, I, I get it, but are you comfortable with that? Because you made the motion.
Um.
Can we add a condition also that the curb cut can only occur after the structure isn't condemned?
Is.
Isn't condemned.
No, because they'll need it to build. You wanna have, you wanna have construct, you wanna have construction trucks on the road? If they, if they get the curb cut, why they're doing, they'll be able to build the.
That's a good point. I didn't think about the actual construction process and vehicles.
Yeah.
I guess, John, is it possible to, um, say like if he were to like, I guess, sell the property before doing the work, like the new owners would have to apply for the special permit again?
You, you can limit the permit to the applicant.
Yeah, could we add that?
No.
That's a good idea.
I'm still, I'm.
Great idea. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure where I stand on forcing.
You put your suggestion in the form of a motion, yes? Yes.
Yes, but it, it was seconded to her motion. I thought, would you like me to start again?
I don't, I don't know if we're ready to make a motion. I think there's a lot of discussion happening.
Her motion did not include Sarah's, so she has to, uh.
Yeah, and I'm not comfortable.
Right. So now we have to vote on Sarah's motion to include permeable, permeables as part of the Charlene's, um, recon, uh, motion to recommend passage of the.
So first, but would be, do we want to make permeable paving?
Part of your motion.
A requirement.
Right. So all in favor of, favor of making permeables part of Charlene's motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any against?
Aye.
Against.
Two against, and so the motion carries. Permeables are now part of your motion to recommend.
And I will second Alan's motion to make sure that it is attached to the applicant. So that if the applicant should sell the building, they, they don't get the parking. They don't get the curb cut.
Okay, so. The new motion is.
Yeah, so I, no, Alan did the motion. I'm just seconding.
Got that?
No.
Well, I would say, okay, so we're adding.
Here's the thing, if, if we keep getting proposals like this, this is, it's just diminishing the greater neighborhood.
We need to focus on the, on the motion, so before we move on to discuss. So, does anybody want to, so I second Alan's emotion, Alan's recommendation that it is a, the applicant, this, that this permit is attached to the applicant.
You hear that?
Yeah, Alan.
Yeah.
Okay.
Everybody understand that motion?
Aye.
All in favor of it?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that counts.
Okay, next.
Now your motion, original motion.
So the, well, it's now a brand new motion to recommend approval to the ZBA with the conditions that we previously outlined to also include a requirement that the driveway be made, replaced and made of permeable paving and that the permit, um, be limited to the applicant.
Right.
Quick question. Would the DPW, like, recommend if he needs a retaining wall on the back end? Because like, I guess that property, like that, that, that abuts like a, basically a project that we approved by, uh, I forget which one.
Well, the DPW is not gonna do their engineering for them. That's up to them to do it themselves or hire an engineer. In some cases, the driveway installer can do some engineering for them.
Okay. Because it does fall, like, at the end of your driveway, one that you want, it does go down, right?
Yes, but would, would you be, allow me to put a storm drain near the end of my driveway? So water will just run off to that storm drain.
I'm just gonna run to the property that's, that big lot that's vacant, right?
Yes, the big lot is vacant, but if I, if I have the contractor dig a hole, put a storm drain there, so, the kind of the catch basin, so water will just run through that drain there.
I think that would be an acceptable, acceptable alternative, sure. The whole idea is to not send water to the neighboring yards. And although your property is already paved, if a proposal like this were to come at us in the future, we would need to require permeable pavement or a storm drain. So you're setting a precedent for future applicants. That's the, that's the concept.
Yes, because the rea, the reason that I prefer to do the storm drain because if we dig up to put like some different material during the snow come, it, it really difficult to drive back and forth on top of the loose driveway. So that's why I would prefer to do a storm drain at the end of the driveway.
Yep, I believe it would, the term would be dry well, not a storm drain because it would be your own well, not something that's sending it to the municipal.
Yes, will be all water will run into those, those, those well there instead of run off to the next neighbor.
Correct.
Yes.
I guess, you're digging up a driveway, that. Who would distinguish, so he would hire an engineer, I guess who would distinguish if he does need a retaining wall at like the back of his property for the driveway?
It would be the engineer who would determine that.
Okay.
So are we going with the permeables or are we allowing a storm right in?
Yes, I think that's an acceptable alternative.
Oh, acceptable.
The dry well in lieu of the permeable pavement.
Right. All in favor of Charlene's motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
One opposed.
Thank you.
We'll see you, see you on the zoning board November fourteenth in this room.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Yep, I'll send you the DPW comments.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your patience tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, bud.
All right, uh, case number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two at eleven John Street for Jorge Martinez, Martinez.
My name is Jorge Martinez, uh, direction on the John Street, Chelsea.
My name is Jorge Martinez at eleven John Street, Chelsea.
So describe your project.
Um, trying to get, seeking a special permit for a parking spot, five of them on my property.
Is there currently a curb cut in front of your house?
Si, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Since you're taking parking, since you're parking on the sidewalk, where did, where did, where did the pedestrians park? Where did the pedestrians get to walk?
The driveway?
It's around ten feet, just saying, around the red line, right in between is, um, kind of ten.
Yes, si.
That's it.
Saying it's ten feet. It's five from, from his property, five from the other property. That's the word.
Okay, so the, the red portion is a, I was gonna say, is a parking easement or a access for someone to get to a rear lot?
No, that's the driveway, yeah. Driveways, that's the driveway, yeah.
Okay, so the text.
This issue came up with the zoning board of appeals. Um, it is actually a ten-foot common passageway, five feet onto his property, five feet on the other property. And, um, I did look up the wording for the passageway and it says a common passageway to be used for those uses that a passageway are normally used for. That's literally the wording. I, I added it to your package there.
I guess the question would be, does the rear neighbor rely on that path to get to their house? What's a shared easement? So it's ten feet that each have five.
Five, five feet on each half. There, it's, it's, it's not an easement, it's a common passageway that they all have rights to. His property, the property to the right, property to the left, they all have access to it.
Okay, and the twelve feet that you're proposing does not overlap with that ten-foot portion?
No, no.
No, it doesn't overpass the pathway, the ten feet.
I'm guessing that this is like five feet or ten feet, right? But they chose to plant their five feet.
So I, I'm just, I'm, I am having a hard time trying to picture what it is you want to do based on the pictures you have provided to us because it appears that, I mean, is the parking going to encroach or is it going to be on the sidewalk as well?
Yes.
Yes.
It, yes, but, but no, I'm talking, you know, the sidewalk that pedestrians walk along, like, I mean, the easement, not just the easement, I'm talking the public sidewalk. Because that's, it's, it's.
No, if you look at his, his, his property includes all of, I'm sorry, all of this outline here is his property. Five feet of it is a common passageway along with five feet on the abutting property. All this is outside of the passageway and that's where he's proposing his parking.
But I'm looking, okay, if you go like at the bottom of that drawing, so where is the public sidewalk in relation to where the parking is outlined?
The property line is. The property line is here, so this is the sidewalk.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I think it's confusing because there's concrete next to the, the pavement in, on his, next to the house. But that's not John Street, that's the property.
Yeah, go one more picture. That's John's.
That's my report.
We're looking, we're, this is the application that he's.
The application.
Okay, but let me ask the question here, so the, the vegetated part on the far right, is that the five foot, which is half of the ten-foot easement?
Yeah.
I shouldn't use the word easement, but a shared access route.
Shared access.
My issue, too many cars.
Yeah.
Five cars, too many cars. I'll go to, I'll, I'll go to three.
Yeah, that seems more.
Unless you think I'm driving a smart car.
Was the request to widen?
No, 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 just to, but if you look at the curb cut, what is the request?
The request is to allow parking in this location right here.
So, okay, so then that would be to widen the curb cut.
It doesn't look like it needs to be widened.
It doesn't need to be widened.
Have you talked to your neighbor who lives in the back?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Has he talked to his neighbor that lives in the back, that he shares the driveway with?
He's always been complaining about, part of that passageway is belong to her.
I don't have that, that color print from the, from the application, I don't have that. All red is black and white.
So that, somebody asked the DTA.
That's the rear of the car.
Yeah, that's the picture I was looking at earlier, it's hard to see, but the dark area on the right
Right, and you see the.
Is vegetated, and my question is, is that the neighbor's five-foot portion?
No. The five-foot portion is here, this is where they want to park.
So is any actual construction gonna be required? Or is this just cars parking on the sidewalk?
Good question.
It's not a public sidewalk, I mean, that was my question.
Okay, it isn't a sidewalk, it just looks like a sidewalk.
I guess runs along the side of the property, it's not public.
Okay, s- so there aren't gonna be any, any construction changes or changes to the asphalt or anything, this is just giving cars a place to park?
If that's the case, I would support leaving it alone. But if we are, ask, if the applicant is asking for a wider curb cut, then I would not support that, I just, I, it's not a good idea.
I would also just recommend two, based off of the pictures that are right next to his house, rather than like the front and the two, or he's asking for five, um, like the.
They're gonna be right on top of the house.
Again, it's, it's a bad precedent to set, and I would imagine that the, you know, fire department is not gonna be a big fan having to get.
Yeah, this is a particularly strange situation in terms of.
Yeah, I just, I just think it's, it's too many cars.
I agree, five cars is a lot.
And right on top of the house.
I would like to make a motion to reject this proposal.
What was your motion?
To reject the proposal.
I'll second it.
So, your motion is to make a recommendation that the board of appeals not grant the special permit?
You second it?
No.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to reject the application or to not recommend it to the BCA. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against?
Me.
Aye.
Aye. So, how many are against? One, two, three, four, five?
So the motion doesn't matter.
Against the motion or against the proposal? Against the motion to deny the motion.
Well, against the motion.
So it does not pass?
Okay, so anyone wanna make another motion?
I'll make a motion.
So, is the alternative cutting it to like two or three parking spots as opposed to five? Because five is, is, five is like radius, for this base, I think.
I think so too, so I would like to make a motion to approve for three parking spots with the standard conditions, ensuring that the tenants are ineligible for the city's parking program in addressing the, the concerns raised by the Department of Public Works.
I mean, I'm, I guess my change would be to, um, just based off of the way that this driveway looks from here, uh, cause he would just be, like this is two parking spots right there. Three would be in front of that right there and would be close to the sidewalk and would take off, like, that would, it does seem like the driveway does funnel, so it's like more narrow in the front and it widens in the back. The two, I'm proposing is gonna be two in the back. Uh, I do think three in the front, like the third one in the front is gonna be super tight.
Yeah, so I don't.
By approving the proposal, does that allow the applicant to widen the curb cut?
No, he's not asking to widen.
I don't think so, um, and we should probably specify if to which two parking spots, and I'd say the two furthest from the street, so it stays pretty open in parking spots, three through five.
I have a question, I'm kind of wondering like, maybe, maybe I'm missing something obvious, but I'm surprised that people aren't already parking there?
There probably are.
They were parking there, the neighbor to the rear called the Inspector Service Department, which fined them because they don't have the zoning permit to do so, and that's why they are here, to get the zoning permit to do so.
I see, this makes it all much clearer, thank you.
Does number two, oh, sorry, number fifty-two Eleanor, rely on this access to get?
I can tell you that the neighbor to the rear was here at the last, at the ZBA meeting and she says she does rely on access to get to her property to the rear.
We can hear you, I couldn't hear you. She does rely on it to get to her property.
Okay, is the neighbor in favor of this proposal?
It was a neighbor at the parcel, the structure immediately to the rear of this structure.
And can you share a little bit about what she said, why she was against it?
Be honest with you, it was confusing because she was just dead set against any parking there. She did say that she was concerned that, um, the fire department would not be able to get up the common passageway and that, um, it's difficult to see her house from the front and if cars were parked in the, uh, in the spaces, that they would not be able to see her house and she would not be able to get deliveries.
Okay, diminishing other people's property, and that's not something in favor. John, could you bring your comments, um, the first page had a site plan or an area plan that showed the massing of the other structures around it? Yeah.
So was this a butter that was at the meeting?
And that's a separate lot, it's like landwalks, okay, that's, that makes it really complicated, I mean.
But it doesn't, like, she does have access, and you can see where she parks right here. She parks right, these two spots right here. So, yeah, of course she's not gonna be favored because it makes it a little bit more tight for her, but this is technically his property.
Does she have parking on her lot?
Yeah, it looks like she has two parking spots.
Not that I'm aware of, other than the passageway.
Right, right, yeah.
I'm gonna make another.
There's a photo that's probably showing the access concern. She probably tries exiting from here and then going down the sidewalk and it's blocked.
It looks like she three points, three point turns into his property where he would park. And she, like, it's, I mean.
Okay, I'm gonna make another motion to reject this proposal.
I'll second it again.
And by reject, do you mean?
That not recommend it to zoning board, or that?
Recommend that they not approve it.
Correct.
So that's been seconded?
Second.
Eric did.
I second it.
Second, okay, second time. Motion made and seconded to not recommend approval to the BCA. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Two, three, opposed?
One, two.
Oh, I didn't raise my hand.
Yeah, oh wait.
Wait a minute.
We should count over again.
Could you please do it in favor again?
In favor, aye.
In favor.
Two, three.
Of not recommending.
To not recommend, right.
Four, five, now five.
Recommending denial.
Okay.
Yes.
And not approve.
And that's what, four, it's four of them?
Five.
Five.
All right, and all against the motion? One, two, three, four, so the.
Jessica, Tuck.
The motion is carried by one vote.
And who else, Sarah, Salim, you didn't?
I was voting with Sarah. I, I, I changed my vote. I mean, I changed it from the first one.
From the first one.
We have five people.
So Sarah, you are voting to recommend denial?
I recommend denial, I'm against him, yes.
No, no, I mean, who, so Alan, Tuck.
Mimi.
Mimi, that's it, I got it.
And then Jess. And Jess.
And Jess, okay, I got it.
Against it, I mean, I. You wanted it, yeah, so it's five, four. Did Khalil abstain?
So it passes. Okay, so they have voted to recommend to the ZBA that it be denied. So, you will go to the ZBA on November fourteenth. The, the ZBA can, can take it in whole or in part, or they can ignore it, the ZBA makes its own decision.
Is the department here in this building, he's asking?
I'm sorry?
Is the department here in this building?
The, the, yeah, the, um, meeting is here in this room on November fourteenth, six o'clock.
Okay, uh, the next and final piece of business for the evening is case twenty, twenty-three dash twenty-three at two oh two Washington Avenue. Petitioner is here, and Mr. Midland as well. Ready?
Go for it.
Good evening, or good night, everybody, David Midland representing the petitioners, Kinley and Alex Chung. So I promised to be quick. Um, the petitioners bought two oh two Washington Avenue several months ago. It's currently a three-family house, um, two one-bedroom, one-bath apartments and, excuse me, the anomaly is a six-bedroom, two-bathroom house, which is totally impractical, um, basically use, useless as far as renting it out. So what the petitioners have proposed is split that six-bedroom, two-bath unit into a four-bedroom, one-bath and a one-bedroom, one-bath. And we laid it out as the before and after picture, basically. There'll be absolutely no change to the exterior of the building, no change to the footprint. Um, the only change will be building a partition wall, um, was designed by an architect, by McDougal Architects, um, and somehow reconfiguring the entrance and egress from the individual apartments. And that is it, um, it's actually reducing the bedroom count because one room will have to be turned into a kitchen for the fourth apartment. Um, not anymore burdensome on the neighborhood, in fact, um, with the reduced bedroom count, likely less burdensome. There's no parking now and there'll be no parking once the change is made, and that's it in a nutshell.
Can you, John, can you pull up the floor plans? So I don't think, do we have the, the.
I'm sorry, are you looking for a site plan or floor plan?
Um, actually, I have floor plans here, I'm sorry, could you summarize again the quantity of units that you're changing?
So, right now, um, on the first floors, a one-bedroom, one-bath, uh, there are two one-bedroom, one-bath units. The second and third floors is that it was formerly owner occupied and it was six bedrooms on the second and third floors. There were six bedrooms, two baths in that third unit. Um, John, I'm not sure if you have it, but we had the addendum, which laid out the, the room configuration.
Would there be an additional unit to what exists now?
Well, one, the big unit, the six-bedroom, yes, I mean, the six-bedroom will be split into two units. So there'll be a four-bedroom, one-bath and a one-bedroom, one-bath made out of that overly large unit. So, what was six, seven, eight bedrooms will be seven bedrooms. So the twenty-three hundred sixty-eight square foot unit will be a sixteen hundred thirty-four square foot unit and a seven hundred eighty-eight one-bedroom, square foot one-bedroom. Excuse me?
Down a unit.
Upper unit but down a bedroom.
Oh, oh, I'm looking at that.
So, there'll be four units. So, the new configuration will be four units but seven bedrooms. The old config, the current configuration is three units but eight bedrooms. And one of the bedrooms, I'm not sure which room will be converted into a kitchen, but obviously the new unit will need a kitchen.
I don't know, I, I think this one's kind of easy. Um, and I will make a motion to, that we, uh, recommend approval by. Um, and I will make a motion to, that we, uh, recommend approval by the ZBA. With, um, our standard conditions as applicable, um, the understanding that the tenants will not be able to participate in the city's resident parking program. And that the concerns raised by DPW will be addressed.
I guess I need to add, uh, that this special permit is exclusive to...
Yeah.
Well, once they divide it, it'll be, whoever, once they divide it, if they sell in the future, it'll still be divided, or are you saying that they have to put it back together?
Well, if they sell the property before any, any work is done.
They can't sell as a fourth building now, like they would need to make the changes.
Second?
I'll second it.
They seconded that the, uh, board, uh, recommend approval by the BCA with the, what was that condition that you quoted?
And it's attached to the amenity.
Oh, right, right, right. With the standard conditions plus the additional one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm gonna abstain, I don't fully understand everything going on, but I'm just gonna abstain.
Abstain?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, motion was carried. Thank you.
You're welcome. That is how you should do it, short and sweet.
Oh, we have one more.
Yeah, you need to, you need to vote to move the next case, uh, the presentation to the next meeting. Need a motion?
I will make a motion that we move to our next meeting. The presentat- the annual mid-year update for the community development block grant fiscal year, um, two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. And the annual community development strategy. Again, I move that we move that to our next meeting.
I'll second that.
Sarah did.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Aye. Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.